Let's see that.
Video?
I see it doesn't show up on there, that's why.
Okay.
But just be for my camera, I don't think.
Yeah, it's not for the other one.
I can hear everywhere, but they can't see, right?
Yeah, well. Well, I guess, no, was Kim, Kim was gonna join, she's joining via Zoom for the bond refinancing, but may, oh, you're here, okay. So you know what, I'm thinking, maybe we go ahead with, if you all are comfortable with it, I'll give the LEPC update and then we'll go ahead with the financial update. We'll come back to community input, if that's all right with everybody. So that if somebody online would like to make a comment, we'll be able to see them. Is there anybody here in person that would like to make a comment for community input? Yeah, why don't you come on up?
Okay, so, um, my name is Donna Vinho, and I've lived in Carlisle for thirty-five years. And I was just coming and wanted to inform the Select Board of an upcoming citizen petition regarding.
Excuse me, before you go on, what street do you live on?
Eight Acton Street.
Thank you.
So the upcoming citizen petition regarding the recent placement of safety signs in the center of Carlisle. I'll hopefully be gathering signatures for a petition to modify the green neon sign situation in Carlisle's historic district. The petition will request a reduction in the number, size, and look of the town, of the signs to better reflect the rural, small-town and historic character of Carlisle's Town Center. So does anybody have any questions or?
Actually, for community input, we just take your input, which we really appreciate, but we don't go any back and forth yet. But thank you very much, Donna, we appreciate it. Anyone else like to offer from the audience, any community input? So if you're, those of you online, if you have community input to offer, I will come back and ask you that again in the hopes that we'll have the video working. And somebody, one of our Select Board members, you're gonna help me remember that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So for the LEPC update, this is a group that meets usually the Monday before the Select Board meetings, and we have members of the Board of Health and the Fire and Police Department and the Library and the Council on Aging and a, you know, a broad section of the town to just see, primarily, at this point, we're looking at where we are in terms of COVID and the pandemic. And so I will say that the Board of Health agent reported that, you know, we're seeing a few cases in Carlisle, but not many, which is good news. And that the Board of Health will take up the mask mandate that they approved earlier. They will take that up at their next meeting, which will be on October 6th, which is when they'll review the mask mandate and determine whether or not they're gonna continue it. There will be a flu clinic coming up Friday from ten to one PM. And I believe, and the school, I'll just tell you really quickly, the report from the school superintendent was that things are going well at the school, they've had a couple of cases, they've been able to go through their protocol of test and stay. So if a student shows positive, they come and they take one of those quick tests, and if they're negative, then they can go back to school, go back to their class. And let's see, finally, I wanna give you the good news, I think, that we had a conversation about Halloween, and we are gonna hold Halloween on Halloween itself, which is a Sunday, October 30th, and at the usual time, from four to eight PM. And it'll be, again, the Town Center will be hosting a Town Center Halloween. And anyone in the neighborhood that would like to organize their own neighborhood trick-or-treating, that's certainly fine as well. And I'll just make a plug that if people wanna help donate candy to the Town Center operation for Halloween, which is pretty big, if you haven't ever been there, then you're welcome to drop off a bag of candy, it burns. Alrighty, with that, that's the end of the LEPC update. And I think we'll then go on, and starting with our town accountant, pro, no, what would they say? Ex officio, I guess, right? Priscilla Dumka.
Emeritus.
Emeritus.
Emeritus, sorry, 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 emeritus, okay. And then Kelly Byer, who is our going to be town accountant, once we approve that, and we're doing that tonight, correct, Tim?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So should we do that first, Tim?
Either way, I mean, Priscilla can certainly give the report as a retiree. Maybe she should be town accountant when she gives the final report.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, Priscilla, come on up, thank you very much. And this is a review of the 2021 receipts and expenditures, yeah, and yeah, is that on? Good, okay.
Hello.
Hi. Yeah. If you need to pull out a few more chairs, please feel free to do so.
It's a little harder.
All right, I just thought it was, it made sense for me to talk to you about where everything ended up for 2021, and as I'm leaving, so. I sent you three reports, one was where CARES and FEMA are right now, and where revenue ended at the end of the year, and where expenses ended. So which would you like to talk about first? Yeah, you wanna go in order of the reports? Okay. First I'll do is the revenue, the revenue. Kelly helped do this report. At the end of the year, we're $332,000 more in revenue. It's a really strange report, 'cause we actually took in less, but the budget was less, so that's why. But, you know.
Good accounting, huh?
Yeah, it's great accounting, David. So that's good news.
I hire you for my company, you get less revenue but make more profit, yeah.
And then for expenses, the number starts with seven, so. Get to the bottom, seven sixty-two in unexpected expenses. That doesn't mean we have a million dollars to rip free cash. It's, I would think free cash will end up close to where it was last year, but it's not an exact science.
How much was it last year?
Three point two million.
Oh, you mean the balance, you think?
The balance.
Why would that be with all that circle?
'Cause you got seven hundred and sixty-two to add to it.
Right, and we used eight, so it, you know, we used eight.
We used eight, oh, I see, you mean, okay, the balance, but the the, after we use what we used, it did go up in amount.
Yeah, we're going, we're gonna, it looks like it'll all be replenished what we use, which is great. And do any questions on either?
So just from a formatting, it's been a while since I looked at these. So I see the comparisons, and then at the town meeting, we made some transfers, which was what we knew at the time, I guess, right? I mean, the June column, transfers June twenty-one.
That wasn't town meeting, that, transfers can be made starting May 1st, and it has to be agreed with, it's a vote of selectmen and finance committee, so we did.
In some cases, we made the transfer, but it looks like maybe we didn't have to, we just, we didn't know at the time.
Right, we did the same thing at the reserve fund, I had some money put into different budgets. You just never know what's gonna come to, into your office after that. And after July fifteenth, you can't use that reserve fund, so it doesn't make sense to just leave it in the reserve fund.
But you don't have to zero out every line item or every department, it doesn't really matter.
Nope, nope, it falls down to free cash if it's coming from the reserve fund or from a department.
Okay, so. So the big, I mean, I just looked at the big things that stood out, like group insurance got a lot lower? It's like the way lower.
Negotiation that, remember, that Kim went through, and made the changes, which saved a lot of savings.
That's, that's gonna help, help this year. That didn't really help last year.
I see what you're saying, right, right.
But there was, you know, there was a lot of guessing last year when they did the budget, and I think that some extra money was put in that line.
So that will inform them for this year's.
Right.
And when Jack Huntress gets here, I gotta ask my school committees over budget, seventy-six thousand.
He is here.
Oh, so why is school committee over budget by seventy-six thousand dollars, Joe?
I'm gonna need to get back to you on that deal.
Okay. Not gonna let you out of this room until you do. Gonna shake you up right now and see how much change you have in.
Yeah.
It'll be seventy-six thousand dollars. Oh, it's great.
That'll solve the coin. Any other comments on this first page, on this first?
On the first report?
Yeah.
Yeah, first report. I found this report very interesting, I, you know, like to receive these actually more often. I'm on a couple of, you know, nonprofit boards and the, in commerce, this sort of thing comes to the board every couple of months. So we track, and then, and in fact, they do a lot more revising of their budgets, you know, as a tracking, but I think, I find it very interesting, and I think it'd be nice to have this a direct presentation like this more often.
Budget, budget reports, la, la, before last year, I was giving budget reports, and Tim would have those for the general fund every month, but with COVID and all of the work that was going on, I changed it to quarterly. So any quarter, you can ask him for the reports, or Kelly can surely come in.
If I go in and ask the report, it's different than if it's, if it's presented to the board.
On our agenda.
So I think we should have a standard quarterly review.
Sure.
And when you have those, like, for the first quarter, so. It will be the run rate, it'll be the, it'll be a quarter of the budget, it will show us like where we are relative to time, it's not always geographically synced, right?
Yeah.
The question is, how useful is the not full year?
I have to say the revenue won't help at all.
Right.
Because most of the revenue is motor vehicle tax, and that comes in March. So until that third, after the third quarter, that won't help. The expenses, the report that we can get out of Munis has a percentage of the year, that might help.
It's lumpy.
It sure is.
Yeah.
You know.
That's a question, Kate, is it gonna be useful?
I think, well, we'll talk about it offline, I think.
Yeah.
But I think some of it is useful, I think if you do any projecting, that's what's useful.
Yeah.
That's what I'm looking for. It's, it's not so much, as you say, David, the lumpy part of the beginning, but you do, I assume you continue to project and plan, you know.
You get the most fidelity out of this report.
Yes, right, obviously, 'cause it's.
The issue is like fidelity and ability to steal, like, just being informed, it doesn't help you much if it's all over.
No, but that's where the projection.
You can identify some things coming up that maybe you have to adjust for, that's.
Right, that's what I would like to know.
Kelly, you have big shoes to fill here, maybe you can think about how that would be useful to us, like projecting.
Yeah.
Kelly and.
And then what, the thing that can be reported is if any of the budget lines are going over, you know?
Yeah, also very.
That's, that's the real important thing, that would always be like, at Finteam meetings, I would report that, you know, and to report to everybody would make sense.
But you know, Priscilla, so, any given line item, like a salary, like salary should be fairly linear thing. So that, that should be pretty true to, you know, timing. And then some other things, insurance bill, or who knows what. They may be lumpy because.
We pay them.
Pay them.
Those are pre.
And you don't.
Preloaded.
You don't, like, like if you do a prepay or something, you're not just putting a twelve in each month, you're just reporting what you.
When it goes.
Yeah, it's totally cash.
But you have the history, so I guess you could build a little macro or something to say, okay, paying this much this month really means we're on this run rate, like.
Yeah.
That's where.
All right, should we move on to the next report?
Okay, the next is the CARES and FEMA, I spent a lot of time with you this past year, and I just, I wanted you to know where we are right now. You know, FEMA, for, we'll talk about CARES first, the town's allotment was four sixty-two, six sixteen, and right now we have spent three thirty-two. So the, what they, what they do is they gave us one allotment of money, and then we asked for a second allotment of money, we tried to get it all, but that didn't work because we had the, the structure added in it, and we weren't, seeing, we didn't give vaccines out by, we couldn't give vaccines out by the end of December, they wouldn't allow that, so there's ninety-five thousand dollars not received from the town yet, by the town yet.
They won't pay us back for that.
We can talk about that in a second. So there's one last report for an allotment that we can get the rest of our allotment, but the, the structure has been interesting, it's. I had many conversations with different people from FEMA and CARES, and what we need is a dialogue, a written report, not numbers, I have the numbers, or Kelly has the numbers, of what we spent, but we need, why did we spend it? And what happened was, I can see by all the expenses, we were gearing up to do vaccines, and then the governor changed the course, but we need to record that in a, in a.
Narrative.
Narrative, and I, I don't, didn't get that, maybe in the next month, we can.
I believe all of that's encapsulated in the minutes of the LEPC.
Yeah, okay.
So I think you could probably, and very well, you know, done, described, and you could probably just, you know, cut and paste and put that all together. I don't think you're gonna have to, you know, reinvent the wheel on that one.
And what, what we said, what would happen was, I called, I talked to a person at FEMA, and he said, it's not gonna fly, but in these, it's really strange, certain, certain expenses, you had to go to FEMA first and get denied. So we have to go to FEMA first, get denied, and then go to CARES. The person at CARES said that should be federal money. So I think we would get reimbursed for it, it's just that narrative has to be named.
Who's gonna drive that faster?
Right, so.
You guys are gonna drive that?
No, I, I did the numbers, and I asked the police chief, the fire chief, Linda and Tim, and have not gotten it, so.
But I mean, putting the narrative together.
Who's gonna get the narrative form, so, Tim, is that something you can follow up on, or?
Follow up on that, I'm not the one that's gonna write the narrative.
No, I'm just saying, I think the minutes that were taken of the LEPC meetings should, you know, which Christine there has done a good job on.
Should the Select Board be writing that letter to, is it to FEMA or to CARES?
It would be, it would be FEMA that would have to have a good description, and between Bill and I, we could get a report out, we can do a report just for those expenses.
Yeah, and you know, I suspect, Tim, that Christine, who took the minutes, would be happy to pull out the relevant sections of the minutes going back and put it into some kind of form, the narrative.
Yeah, I'll follow up.
Okay.
It should really be reviewed by John and Linda. Once it's pulled together, I mean, I think they.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, or John maybe is the head of the LEPC, I'm not sure, but we can figure that out.
No, that's exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
The emergency manager.
Right, right, okay.
So, so, we do have a little bit of money left that we're spending right now. CARES goes through the end of December, that we can use the money. FEMA, FEMA, we've, we've put through a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars worth of FEMA expenses. A lot, a good half of that is the testing money. And we have gotten either the money or a contract for almost all of it, just that last fourth quarter has not been agreed upon yet, but.
But you'll be submitting that.
That's already submitted, everything is, yeah, all that's done. Before I left, that was really important to be done. So it's all done, and I think the, the final quarter's been okayed, it's just going through all the different steps.
Okay.
You know?
All right.
But that's, that's where we're at.
All right. Great, and I see here below your reports that there is a vote of the Select Board that needs to be taken, am I right about that? This, this language here, I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Carlisle, certify that a meeting of the board held on September twenty-eighth. Now, is that something we?
Next title?
That might be, oh, that's the bond, okay, sorry.
Alrighty, got it, okay, well. Priscilla, this is a great opportunity, though, for us to, I know, you don't like to be pointed out, but, you know, since we're, yeah, exactly, since we're live, and, you know, give us an opportunity to thank you again for your incredible service to our town for so, so many years. And we just, you know, it'll, I know Kelly's gonna do a great job, 'cause she started under your wing, and, but we will really miss you and really appreciate what you've done for all of us.
Thank you, thank you. Oh, I have to tell you, I'm sleeping better, so.
Good, it feels really good. That's great. All right, well, thank you, and then Kelly, we'd like to, yeah, Kelly, we'd like to approve you as our new town accountant, and do we have a motion in our packet for that, Tim?
I think it's as simple as appointing her as the.
I move we appoint.
With town of Carlisle.
Okay.
We have her full name. I move we appoint Kelly Byer to a position of town accountant.
Any discussion? We're very happy to have you, Kelly. All right, and this can be a roll call vote, correct? I mean, a voice vote.
Yes, because, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, excellent, welcome, Kelly, thank you so much.
You can be sleepless.
Alrighty, it's a little bit after seven thirty, we are, Kim, I know you wanna try to get out of here, how does the, is Jenny Merrill on the phone?
She, she is.
Because I wanna check, do we, do we need to start the dog hearing, 'cause we posted it for seven thirty, or can we take?
You can start no sooner than seven thirty, you can do the laundry funding and get to the hearing when you get to it.
Okay.
Just to interrupt, I don't mean.
Yes, no problem.
But Jenny sent me a note saying that she can see and hear everything at the meeting, I just don't know if we can hear anybody that's on the call.
Ah, okay.
Are there people at the hearing?
Can you hear me? Yeah.
Oh, good, Jim, all right, and now we can see you.
All right.
Excellent, okay, Jenny, so we're gonna get to the dog hearing shortly, we're gonna just take the refining, the bond refinancing, which I know Kim has worked very hard on, so Kim Hayne, please come on up, our financial director.
Thank you, I have Margaret McLean here too, bond counsel, should you have any questions, she may assist me in some of the signatures, which I'm sure Tim scared you a little bit when he forwarded you some of the.
Here it is.
So there are, there's several signature pages, 'cause there's sixteen different bonds you'll have to sign on. But the first thing we'd have to do is the vote by the clerk, which I believe that's what you started to read.
Yes, okay.
And I have physical thing here that I'll need you all to sign, the town clerk's here to certify them.
And the, actually, I think the clerk is Nathan.
Yeah, he's not.
They don't have our clerk here.
He's the school, he's the board clerk, or is it the town clerk?
No, it's the board.
No, 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 the board clerk.
Board.
Oh, clerk of the Select Board, it's Nathan.
And anybody sign for the clerk?
Can you appoint one?
Temporary appointment of a different person to be the clerk.
We can see it out.
I am the learning crew.
All right, so well, and I have a motion to temporarily.
I move that we temporarily appoint David Modell as our clerk pro temp for the Select Board.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And just so you know, the, the original bond was over thirteen million dollars, and we've now rewritten it for seven million, six hundred and fifty thousand with a thirteen percent net present savings, so we're saving about one point one million over the life of the loan, and we'll capture about twenty thousand this year, and the rest will be captured over the sixteen years, which is when the bond fully comes due. There's about nine hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and nine in premiums that we received, and the tick, the average interest rate that we got was one point two eight five. So we did, we had ten, ten bids, so we did a good, did a good job on, on this, Margaret worked really well on it, and pleased that we got it done now before the interest rates start going up. So the motions will be first, I'll have David then sign, and then we'll do the notes.
You wanna read mine?
You want the physical copy, David?
No, it's okay, just explain what you're doing. I'm not supposed to read it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to read or.
I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Carlisle, Mass, certify that at a meeting of the board held September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified, and at which a quorum was present, following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody, but don't we have to vote them?
I move that in order to reduce interest costs, the treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter forty-four, Section twenty-one A of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund all or a portion of the town's thirteen million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars general obligation municipal purpose loan of two thousand twelve, bonds dated November, November fifteenth, two thousand twelve, maturing on November fifteenth in the years two thousand twenty-two through two thousand thirty-seven inclusive, collectively the refunded bonds, and that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal redemption premium and interest on the refunded bonds and cost of issuance of the refunding bonds, that was all one sentence.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And.
I move that the sale of the seven million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollar general obligation refunding bonds of the town dated October fifth, two thousand twenty-one, in quotes, sorry, in print, the bonds, to BOK Financial Securities, Inc., at the price of eight million, five hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and thirty-five cents, and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on September fifteenth of the years, and in the principal amounts and bare interest at the respective rates, and then there is a chart of rates for the various years, all of which are
in the packet.
In the packet.
Right here, a second. Any discussion?
Why is it like five percent for the first seven years, and then it goes to two percent?
That's the way they stagger the note, they'll do an interest rate of five percent, and then some will decrease, you know, three percent, two percent, one percent, they did five through the first seven years, I think it was, and then.
Does that disincentivize you for early?
And then, so the, the interest rate looks higher, but then with the premium, that's the way the tick works out, do you have a? An explanation?
They're not callable in the 5% years. They're not callable until the 2%.
The callable, which we'll see what happens there, which is gonna call it 2%.
Especially not after Jay Powell and everybody's done the cuss.
All righty, any other discussion?
Is that really the name, BOK?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that's just, that's an act, that's not really the BOK. Oh, yeah, that's a little suspect, yeah. We're gonna treat him in hell.
All right. Any other questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, it passes.
I move that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated September 14th, 2021, and a final official statement dated September 22nd, 2021, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted.
If you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I move that the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I move that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond counsel deemed sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and retain the tax exempt status of the bonds and to comply with relevant securities laws.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That any, I move that any certificates or documents relating to the bonds collectively, the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of the signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, I move that each member of the select board, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now you're on, David.
I have to match your eloquence, okay. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General set forth in 940 CMR 29.03 to B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remains so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with GLC 30A, Sections 18 to 25 as amended.
Okay.
All right, now you get to sign it.
Well, we all.
Oh, well, but that's, needs to be signed by the clerk of the select board, that, that affidavit that we just read.
Black is okay? Not blue?
And this is all the clerk signing all this, that there's stuff that we have to sign?
I made a blue pen.
Okay.
I know you got a blue pen.
This is dark blue.
Hand me the staff.
Is that the only thing we're?
Hi, ladies, have a nice evening.
Thank you, Priscilla. Thank you, Kelly. Bye night. Pass it down the row.
Yeah.
Let you sign on the top. This is my board of selectman pen that my son made for me.
Yeah, I remember.
I don't know where you, where you jumped in. Can I just put that there?
This is saving the town a lot of money, I want the audience to know.
A million won.
It's, it's, yeah, worth doing.
Each, is this one each each bond, or what is this? I think I ran out of ink. This is life insurance.
My goodness, it's.
Only 16 of them, you guys.
Because it's going right through the paper.
Yeah.
Happy I shortened up my signature.
Is that a special one?
No, she, she's.
Oh.
Uh huh.
Great.
Whip for one, I guess.
Okay.
You haven't done that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. This is your thing.
Yeah. It's one of her signatures. And your signature. This is just the line.
Okay.
Have a little sticky on.
We've got some more to do.
I do the sticky between. That's okay, I'm catching them.
The select board, we have, have like.
I get all the little sticky on them.
It's not in the budget. Budget for stickies. Sorry. Oh, boy. We're done, I still worry anxious. That's Dave. All right, babe, a new guy. Saw clerk, I got all excited, yeah.
All right.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I stopped, Oscar Willow's just too long, and then even Luke got too long, now it's just like an owl. Barney thinks Arnold is too long. Yeah, well, that's what happens, right?
Yeah.
You good?
Those are for yours, you know, those are your things, so that's not.
Look at the stack of paper she's got. This is like refinancing house, have you done this recently?
Initially, you're assigned here, initially you're assigned. Sorry, I'll take my pile of crap.
You got your pile of crap.
I did, it's just now it's in pieces, yeah.
Yes, you can, and she said.
Oh, boy. Forgot how to sign.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, both of you. Yeah, and the town thing. This financing, yeah.
It's in the stamp.
This is here. Financing, yeah.
That must be in the older gender.
Yeah, I think you are.
Yeah, you only have 80. The other one's got 90. Thank you, Kim.
All right.
Thank you, Margaret.
Okay, so we are moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the dangerous dog hearing per Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157. So to open the hearing, I would like to say that this is a hearing of the select board held pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 157, and Section 14.6.7 of the town's general bylaws for the purpose of determining whether the dog named Bo of 480 South Street, Carlisle, Mass 01741, is a dangerous dog or a nuisance dog, and in either case, to determine the appropriate remedial, remedial action to be taken. Now, I want to explain a little bit about what's gonna happen, so the we will have an order of presentation. The first will be that the board will hear from our animal control officer, Gene Delano, then from any other witnesses who wish to speak or present, present evidence, followed by the dog owners if they wish to speak or present evidence. And after that, the board will take comment or evidence from anyone else who is in attendance and wishes to speak. And I will take comments from those parties in that order. The dangerous dog hearing has been initiated based on the written request of Animal Control Officer Gene Delano dated August 30th, 2021, and the underlying quarantine orders for multiple dog bite incidents and an incident report of a serious dog bite at Great Brook State Park on August 20th, 2021. Subsequent to receiving the complaint from the Animal Control Officer, Gene Delano, another dog bite incident was reported to the Carlisle Police Department. So the select board is going to begin the public hearing with the test, with the testimony from Animal Control Officer, Gene Delano. We also have Jenny Merrill here, town counsel, to assist us during the hearing. Jenny, was there anything else I need to say before we take testimony?
I think you're good.
Okay. So I do need to swear in that each person that's gonna provide testimony. Gene, are you on the phone? Oh, oh, hi, Gene, oh, great, okay. So Gene Delano's here in the audience. Gene, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium and just say who you are and your address.
My name is Gene Delano. I am the assistant animal control officer for Carlisle.
So Gene, I'm gonna say the words that you need to say to be sworn in. I, Gene Delano, do solemnly swear.
I, Gene Delano, do solemnly swear.
That the testimony I'm about to give
The testimony I'm about to give.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Mute Eva's phone?
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, Gene, thank you. Yes, please, share your testimony with us, thank you.
Good evening, I, I come before you on this dangerous dog, on a dangerous dog complaint as a result of four orders of quarantine spanning back to May 11th, thereabouts of this year. A subsequent dog bite was reported and, and the animal was quarantined July 11th, two months later. And then there was a report of an attack at Great Brook Farm in, let's see, August, which another order of quarantine was drawn up. That led me to address the board via email that I believe we have, we have a dangerous dog that we need to have a hearing on, which is why we're here today. Subsequent to that process starting, another dog bite was reported at, at 480 South Street. And that's why we're here tonight, to determine whether or not the animal is indeed a dangerous dog or a nuisance dog. Welcome into question. I should also add that I've been asked to read two statements to the parties involved, if that is allowed. If not, I believe the, the select board has copies of those statements.
Jenny, just let me ask you, is that permissible for Gene to read aloud statements from others involved in this situation?
He, he can read the statements and you can, you can, as the hearing authority, can determine if you find them to be credible and, and they should be entered into the record along with any of the other documents that Gene has mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
I received from Kevin Kelly, who, who had been doing work at the residence at 480 South Street, a statement regarding an incident, the incident on July 11th, 2021, where Mr. Kelly had been called to the residence to, on an air conditioning service call. Their statement is that, his statement is that while I was working out on the outside unit with my back turned to the oncoming threat, I heard, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry if I mess up your name, Dave, David Bo-Kunowitz yelled for the dog. Within seconds, the dog had jumped on my back. I stood up and he bit me in the back of my leg and would not release. They then yanked him off me, my pants were ripped in the behind, I was bleeding and in shock. I packed up my tools and left for the doctor's office. They also want you to know that they've made several attempts to, to get certain information from the owners and have been unable to do so.
That, is that, July thing is not in the pack?
Yes, it is. September.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's a September statement.
The incident was July 11th.
Statement is more recent. Yeah.
Separately, on, on, statement dated 9/23, submitted by the person who was injured at Great Brook State Park. The long statement.
This one was in our pack.
Yeah. I may, on August 20th, 2021, around 4:00 PM, I was riding my mountain bike on one of the trails in Great Brook Farm in Carlisle, which I've ridden many times. As I saw the owner approach on a trail, I noticed that both of his two dogs, one white pit bull and a smaller brown dog were off leash. I should note that the, the breed is actually a Doggo Argentino, for the record.
So which one of these two is Bo?
Bo is the white dog.
Okay.
I stopped, dismounted, and moved to the side as I typically do when I approach dogs on a trail. The white dog walked up to me and wouldn't leave. The owner yelled at the dog to come, but it didn't, it did not. At this point, I started to get a bit uneasy and moved to the side and politely asked the owner to please take control of his dog. Then the dog sank its teeth into my inner thigh and would not let go. The pain was excruciating. The owner tried to gain control of the dog by grabbing its collar, but was unable to do so. At this point, my bike had fallen over and the owner was on his stomach on top of the bike trying to pull the dog off. Eventually, it dislodged, but the dog bit me a second time, and again, the owner tried to pull it away. This process occurred two more times, at which point my leg was profusely bleeding. I recall panicking by punching. I recall panicking by punching the dog in the torso in desperation to get it to remove itself. Finally, the dog owner pulled the dog away by its collar, slapped its face, and apologized to me, saying that this has never happened before. And he said in a loud voice in a strangely accusatory tone, "Take a look at me, am I injured?" Puzzled, since I was the one injured, I said, "I don't, I don't know." And he said, "Well, I need to go to the hospital," and he walked away. I asked him for his name, he said, "Dave." I also asked for his phone number, which I verified with him twice before he left. The Carlisle Police was unable to contact the owner and thought that the number might be false. I later found out that some of the digits were reordered. This very well could have been my fault, but I did verify the number of them twice. After I, after he disappeared over the hill, I remember hearing him yell to his little dog to get his little brown dog, to get over here. The small dog came running past me and went over the hill to his owner. At this point, I want nothing more than to get out of there for fear the dog would come back after me. My rear bicycle derailleur was bent and I was panicking to try to get the chain back on the rear cog. I was finally able to bend it back, got the chain on, and painfully biked to the parking lot near the red barn where I called 911. I'm assuming that's the ski barn. Or it could have, it could have been the one off the parking lot, I'm not sure. Ultimately, I was taken to Emerson, where I received fifteen stitches for three puncture wounds. I remember the ER doctor telling me that I was lucky and that it could have been a lot worse. I was unable to contact the owner to determine whether the dog had received its shots. After the Carlisle Police put a letter in the town newspaper, a resident thankfully responded and the police were able to track down and confirm the owner. My stitches have been removed and I'll have scarring, which I don't mind. What makes me upset is that I now am incredibly nervous around dogs. This experience has mentally affected me to the point where I'm afraid to even go for a simple walk on a trail in my town, something I've enjoyed doing with my family for years. In the end, through a conversation I had with the police a couple of weeks after the incident, the owner verbally agreed to pay for my medical expenses, which is all he's asking, I'm asking for, and confirmed that this dog has had its shots. I was also told that the owner claimed his dogs were in fact on a leash and that I kicked the pit bull. I can assure you with 100% certainty that both statements are false. The very fact that he lied to the police is upsetting to me. Thank you for reading this account of what happened and I only hope this statement may help protect others in the future. This person specifically asked at his name and contact information, though part of record not be made public. Do you have any questions?
Are there any other? That's the extent of.
Those, those are the two statements. Subsequent to this, this attack at the park, I, we have a police report that was part of your packet, I believe.
Yeah.
A contractor called to the, called to the house in September.
This is the contractor you referred to? That was statement number one? The, the statement number one? I mean, the statement number two, contractor?
This is, this is.
Third person.
This is the fourth person.
Fourth person, okay.
This is the fourth quarantine from 9/21.
Okay.
Contractors who had been doing work at the, at the residence for a number of days evidently, one of them was attacked by the dog inside a room off the garage and also in the, in driveway evidently. I refer you to the police report that you have. I don't have a statement from that person.
Okay.
There's a lot.
Yes, there is.
Yes.
What was the first incident? Incident?
The first incident evidently was a neighbor who came into the house, it was a young girl.
Remember, that was the May 11th one?
Yes.
And she's here, and I will speak to that.
Okay, yep, you'll have an opportunity, for sure.
My understanding is that the, the girl's father also gave a statement to the police after this last attack that said that his daughter was afraid of the dog.
Okay, so.
That's in your, that's in your packet as well.
Right. So Jean, you have reports of four different incidents of this dog biting.
Four orders of quarantine.
Four orders of quarantine.
There are two police reports, number of police reports, but police reports covering two incidents. The second incident, there is no police report I'm aware of. It was reported to our, to dispatch.
So let me clear, so I understand, so the, the incident at Greatbrook State Park was
The third incident.
Was reported to the police and that, and we've received a statement.
And a police report.
And a police report.
And that are public record.
Yep. And then the last report is, we also have a police report on the final incident?
Yes.
Okay, and and then the, the the two earlier bites, we don't have a statement from the person? We have something in our packet?
You have a statement from the second quarantine.
Okay.
Which was, which was the first contractor in July.
Okay, okay.
Last name is Kelly.
Statement number two.
That's statement number two, okay.
The, the other statement you have is from incident at the, at the state park.
Right, and then is there another statement from the other, the most recent bite?
No, there is not.
Okay.
We, we have sensitive police reports.
Okay.
Jean, can I ask you a process, procedural question? You had a, an incident reported to you when an order of quarantine comes out.
Correct.
And how long is that for?
Quarantine lasts for a ten day period from the moment the bite occurs.
And that means confinement change?
Means confinement in the home and that the, the animal cannot be walked without being tethered to a person.
So did any of these incidents happen during the quarantine period?
Hmm. No. They're, they're, they were spaced out about two months apart and then another month apart.
I mean, if a quarantine order came out, there's no evidence to say that the party did not, the parties did not comply with it. One assumes they comply.
No, no evidence of that whatsoever.
If I may add something? There's also, Jean, the temporary restraint order.
Oh, yeah, there, there have been two, well, there's a temporary restraining order that was issued as a result of the third incident.
Which is the Greatbrook State Park one?
Yes, which means that, again, that the animal was held confined, similar to being quarantined really, until this hearing happened.
Okay.
There was, there should be a subsequent, there should be a subsequent restraining order for the.
That was the fourth incident, that wasn't after the Greatbrook Farm. I got the phone call from the police and it wasn't, it wasn't.
Okay, well, hold on. Yeah, you will definitely have your opportunity to. Oh, yeah, I appreciate that it is, but I, I know, but.
It's giving you wrong information.
Yeah, okay, hold on, we will definitely take information from you as well.
Information.
Yeah, no, I'm sure Jean is doing his best.
It's 9/8.
So there's a, in our packet, there's a temporary restraining order that's dated 9/8/21.
Right, so that was.
Okay, and that's after receiving a complaint on 8/20.
That is the third.
That's the bicycle rider.
Third incident.
Yeah.
Okay, so it is the third. But in any case.
What hasn't been issued is a, is a second restraining order for the fourth incident.
Got it, right. All right, again, I have to ask, please, I know it's difficult to hear something that you don't agree with, but you need to respect the way we're running the hearing. Hang on, hang on. I know, I, you'll have an opportunity and we really need to follow the process that we've outlined here to make this work. There's a requirement for how we run the hearing.
It was sent, it was sent to the address 480 South Street by certified mail by.
That's when we have the receipt from?
But, but Jean, Jean, let me just ask you a question. If, if the, if the report of the incident number four is accurate as stated by the, the.
The police report.
Mm-hmm. The landscaper going through the mudroom and everything. It's possible that the dog was inside in the quarantine environment.
I wasn't at the residence.
No, but I mean, I'm saying, if, if, as reported is what happened, the dog is inside and the guy comes inside, right? I just want to.
I think if you read the police report, the narrative is fairly.
Yeah, so it's almost irrelevant about the restraining. The dog was in the residence at the time of that incident, is what I understand.
That's my understanding, and it also came out outside the residence, but still on their property, yes.
Okay, thank you. So I, I just, so I mean, there are four incidents, right? And, and we're first hearing about it now. So what actually brings it to the level of, and where it has to come before us? I mean, is it?
It's unusual for, I, I've only been doing this position since the end of October 2019. I'm very familiar with the dog officer position and the animal control position. There hasn't, I don't remember, recall there being a, one quarantine stacked on another before, so that was a concern of mine. Subsequent conversations with the owner, we worked, I pushed them to get the dog licensed in town. The dog wasn't licensed at the time, at the second incident. After the newspaper account came out, I recognized who likely the dog was. Evidently, several other people did as well. That prompted me to, I felt it was my duty to bring this forward. I'd had multiple conversations with the owners. I just, we're here to protect the public, so.
Exactly, no, I just wondered if like one triggered it or three, or like if there was a specific.
No magic number, but I think if the first incident had been a bite, I would, it would have risen to a level of concern. You know, one incident can be reported by anyone in town and, and you can be asked to have a dangerous, dangerousness hearing just like this.
Okay.
But this, there's four incidents here, so.
Any other questions we have of Jean?
I have one, which, I'm not sure it's for Jean or Jeanie, but.
Jenny.
Jenny, sorry, since you're here on the stand, so to speak, how would you define a nuisance dog versus, what's the other one? Dangerous, what are the two categories?
Yeah.
Well, it's kind of like, it kind of spelled out in Mass Law, but a nuisance dog is a dog that, say, might harass livestock or might be an excessive barker or might threaten but never engage with a person walking down the street. I think a dangerous dog that next level probably involves a bite or a report of a bite. Want to be clear, that's the first incident, which is evidently contested. My involvement was strictly because I received a bite report from Emerson Hospital stating that a, a person who evidently is here had presented at the emergency room or at a walk-in clinic and had been involved with a dog. Specifically, it's the, the box that was checked was either a bite or a scratch. They counted as the same type of incident for exposure purposes. So that's when I started being involved.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions from us on this at this point? Okay, so then, let me move on. Is there any other, thank you, Jean? Any other, let's see, what's the right wording? Sorry, let me go back to my specific document. Is there any other person who is a witness that wishes to testify?
I'm a, I'm a witness to a defense.
Yeah, but you're the dog owner, right?
We are both the dog.
So, yeah, that's fine, so you're the next ones that should have an opportunity to speak. So please, why don't you both come up as the, as the owner of the dog and again, introduce yourselves and state where you live and then we would love to hear what you have to say.
Good evening, my name is Shawna Simic and this is David Bukanovich and my daughters, Bella Simic and Summer Simic and we all live at 480 South Street in Carlisle. I guess first and foremost, you know, I want to apologize that my dog harmed anyone. I mean, we never wanted anyone to get harmed by our dog. You know, and it's unfortunate that we are here. But we purchased Bo like October of 2019. He's lived at our home since then. He goes away with us every weekend. He goes skiing up in Maine every weekend, boating in New Hampshire, hiking all through New England, down the Cape at the beach. I mean, we are away every single weekend. He's part of our family. He goes to other people's houses, he goes to parties with us. We have two children, their friends come over all the time, their friends sleep over all the time. You know, we've, he's had tons of interact, frequent interactions with people. And so, you know, it's hard to sit there and hear these four incidents and you not see the dog and, and one would think that he's just arbitrarily a vicious dog. And I'm just trying to convey that he's not a dog that, you know, attacks people without, without a reason. He's not unpredictable. He is a protective dog. He is, and as you see, three of these incidents happened at our home. And I will go through each incident because, you know, I think they need to, because according to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, 157, there are four exceptions in which you can call a danger that for which a, a dog can attack and not be found dangerous. And I believe they apply here. I mean, first, I have a letter from our vet, our vet, and it says, "To whom it may concern, Bo Simic has been examined at Nishoba Veterinary Hospital on several occasions for routine examinations and his castration. For the past two visits, our hospital was curbside, so no, no patient, no clients were allowed in the building with their pet. His last visit was on November 24th. His physical exams were unremarkable and I made no remarks as to his behavior, temperament issues. Per Dr. Craig Smith, on November 20th, 2019, he, he was noted to be a nice dog." So I mean, he's gone other places and I, you know, with people, without us, and it's been with people, which you will see as well. So I just, I just need, I needed that to get across at the beginning, so, because I feel like it just seems like you're dealing with this vicious dog that attacks everyone. And it's, we are, do get a little upset because he's our family member that someone's talking about. So that, you know, I, I apologize, but I wanted to get that there were some things that were said that were incorrect. But like I said before, Mass General Law's Chapter 140, Section 157 gives four exceptions for a dog being dangerous after biting. And one of them is, a dog cannot be found dangerous if at, if, if at the time of the attack or threat, the person or animal that was attacked or threatened by the dog had breached an enclosure or structure in which the dog was kept apart from the public and such person or animal was not authorized by the owner of the premises to be within such enclosure, including but not limited to, a gated fenced-in area if the gate was closed, whether locked or unlocked. So, you know, I, I would ask that you examine each incident individually and not as a whole, because there are circumstances and facts for each incident. You know, the first incident, Jamie is my neighbor, she's here. You know, she, she has been coming over my house since we got Bo and has just come into my house with her daughter. Her daughter slept at my house. We frequently have weekly dinners together. And on the day in question, Jamie called me because her daughter Ella had, had a splinter and she was freaking out and Ella, who was eight at the time, couldn't, she wouldn't let her mother remove it. So I told her to come over and then I would remove it for her. I was upstairs in my bedroom and my daughter Summer was getting ready for school, so Bella was already at, at school. And the next thing I heard was screaming and commotion. Jamie and her, came with Ella to my door, as she always had and always just walked right in. But this time Ella was screaming bloody murder because of her splinter and was upset and didn't want me to remove it. So when she opened the door, she was screaming and crying and entered the mudroom, holding Ella. And Bo ran to the door and jumped up, jumped up on her and Ella, and Ella was scratched. I, I was the one that went to the hospital with them because I wanted it, you know, I just want, wanted it to be looked at and it was fine, they just gave her Bacer Tracen. She has since been to my home many times after that. She is not afraid of Bo. However, we have, from now on. However, we have, uh, from now on, no, from that point on, from May on, no one is allowed in my house just to walk in on their own. She used to just come over and walk in. And after this incident, we said, everyone has to knock before coming in. So that we can let them in because, um, you know, a dog can't tell if a person entering is harmful or not. And given the screaming, it, it, it scared the dog and he reacted. Bo was startled by her. In fact, when I, when this incident got reported and I spoke to the dog officer, he admitted that his dog would have done the same thing had some, a kid come screaming into his house. He was standing in my driveway. So I mean, it wasn't, um, you know, we put something in place so that that didn't happen again. Unfortunately, um, we then had the contractor, Mr. Kelly, come to our house two months later. And, um, we recently built an addition, I don't know, but we, we doubled the size of our house. We had every contractor, every kind of contractor under the sun in our house. And Bo, you know, we had multiple contractors in our home for months and nothing ever happened because we always kept Bo in his crate when we had, um, when contractors were in our home and/or working inside or outside our home. We always had Bo in the crate, um, or on a leash outside. I mean, we've, we get our lawn mowed weekly, we get propane delivered. We had electricians, we had framers, we had plumbers, we had, you name it, everything. And anytime someone was on our property, we, um, had the dog in a crate or outside on a leash. And we have, um, beware of dog signs. And it's important for this incident. And I have pictures of beware of dog signs. This is a picture of my home. It is a gated-in backyard. Here's a picture of the gated-in backyard.
Thank you.
And on the door to enter the gate to get into the backyard is a beware of dog sign. And there's another beware of dog sign on the tree in the front of the house as well. So. David hired, um, the doc, the con, Mr. Kelly to come repair our air conditioning unit located outside. Mr. Kelly had previously been in my home, um, to install an air conditioning unit. No one was home that time, no, but we're talking about the second time. So, um, David hired him to come and, uh, he informed the contractor, reminded Mr. Kelly that we have dogs and that we were going to be home and that he was to call him before he, to call him when he arrived, like we always do with all contractors. When you get here, call me and I'll take you to where it needs to be, what needs to be fixed or what needs to be done. That was our standard procedure. He knew we had dogs, we had beware of dog signs, everything. The contractor didn't co, didn't contact us even though we were home. He went straight into the yard through the closed gate in which there was a beware of dog sign. And because we didn't know he was in the yard, we let the dog out to go to the bathroom, which we always let him out on a leash had we known that the contractor was there. We had no knowledge. And, you know, he breached the enclosure. We, we told him to contact us before we could. And it's, it was very difficult listening to that because the dog jumped on him. And I wasn't, I didn't see it, I was home, he saw it, we had two other workers there. And then I was told that the dog jumped on him and nipped him. And I asked him, are you okay? And he's like, yeah, he finished working that day. He worked for another hour and a half. Hour and a half after the dog nipped him, he worked. Then he left, everything was fine. And I got a call from, David got a call from his wife saying, how are you going to compensate us? And that's where the whole thing took off. And totally different situation than what was had before. We've tried to contact him numerous ti, like to see how he was. The wife said, you're not allowed to talk to him, you can't talk to him. We've since been, we just got a letter from his attorney yesterday. So I think Jean said that he wrote a letter saying that he's been trying to get in touch with us and send us letters. We got a start, we got a letter from his attorney last week, was the first conversation, so.
I have emails from the wife.
Emails from the wife just saying, how are you going to compensate us? How are you going to compensate?
Any hospital bill, and I offered to pay for the time at work, I was there when it happened. He walked in the backyard, the dog jumped on his back, nipped him, didn't even really get him.
There was no tear because I saw him.
I put the dog in the house, me and him worked side by side. I'm an electrician, what I do, we worked side by side for over an hour. When he went to leave, I asked him if he was okay, he said he was fine. His wife then called. I got it, I talked, that's what I'm, you know what I mean? He, he hired, she hired, she can, after that hired an attorney. He, every conversation I had with him had to go through his wife. So I'm just curious, if he gave the statement or his wife gave the statement? That you got, I'm curious, was it the wife or was it him? Cause the wife wasn't there, so if the wife gave the statement, really, I mean, it couldn't possibly be.
Did you speak to Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, this, you can't question Jean.
No, I just.
This isn't an interrogation of Jean.
Right.
But it's, it's not appropriate for you guys to do that.
Yeah, sorry, so let's.
That's fine, but you're to address this for.
Yeah, you're addressing us and also I will say that the, whatever's going on between you and the contractor in terms of a suit or has nothing to do with this, okay? So I understand. Yes, okay.
What I'm saying is the recount of the story you heard is.
You're disagreeing with that?
Totally disagreeing and I have.
Okay, I hear you.
And everything, and so that's what's kind of hard is he's reading a story and I have a total recollection.
Four people in my home when it happened.
And we have four witnesses to that effect who we've already gave to the, to the, to the lawyer, but.
Okay, so let's go on and tell us about the third incident, yeah.
The third incident. That was another one, you said you had a police report and I didn't see the police report. I did read the, oh, I did, well, it's funny because the police report differs from the statement that was just read.
From the, from the victim and the police report doesn't say that.
The vic, the, the police report says something totally different that happened than what the victim's statement that was just read.
So what, what's your, what's your explanation about?
Surely so happened to agree. Okay, so we've had this dog for two years. The dog goes on a two-hour hike every single day. The dog goes to Great Brook Farm, has been going to Great Brook Farm, Great Brook Farm with David since we got him off-leash every day. And has run into multiple people, multiple bikes, everything. He's, our trainer is here, we do training recall, we've had, we, you know, we had initially, we're doing a lot of training with him. And then, you know, we never had any issues. He's always been off-leash, never had one issue in over six hundred visits to Great Brook Farm. On this incident, the dog was protecting or defending itself, I believe. So what happened was. Go ahead, if you want to go ahead, yeah.
I was the one walking the dog at the time, all right? And I'm going to tell you right now that I feel terrible and I'm so sorry that anybody. It could have been avoidable if Bo was on a leash that time. I walked in my, Shawna said, two years, daily, off-leash, daily, you have to understand, so we've never, ever done this. And he hasn't done it since. Something like this was totally out of his character. I have witnesses here that will tell you, so there had to be something that provoked him. All due respect to the, um, you know, to the victim, my account of the situation is a little different. So I wasn't paying attention, okay? I should have been paying attention and I take full responsibility for the action because Bo has total recall. If I call the dog, it'll come right back to me. But if, like any dog, if it switches click and he's chasing a squirrel or chasing something, he's not going to come back. At one step, switches click, he just wouldn't, won't listen. So if I was paying attention, I could have called him back. I came up over the hill, I saw, uh, the victim on the bike, okay? Bo ran up to the, to the bike.
The victim was stopped?
The victim was stopped on the side. He wasn't off his bike, he was on his bike, he just stopped like, cause we just came, kind of came over the hill together, I didn't see him. I saw him, I walked up, Bo ran, ran up, I yelled at Bo. He yelled, the victim yelled, and he didn't say it nicely, he said, get your dog, okay? I immediately, which is fine, I get it.
And I understand it could be scary.
Bo was a big dog, I completely understand it and.
Yep, to what happened then?
So Bo jumped on his front tire, then he kicked at Bo. And Bo jumped on the bike. None of this was in the police report either, but the, but the officer that took the police report verbally told me that this is what happened. I grabbed Bo.
The victim said that this is.
I grabbed Bo by, by his harness and I had him, okay? At that point, it's over, it's done. I had Bo, I had control of him, he has a harness on with a handle. The victim scared, you know, I completely understand, removed his bicycle helmet, swung his bicycle helmet, okay? Missed Bo and hit me in the face. I have a scar over my eye. He said, you know, I, I have a, you, I mean, I can walk around and show you, all right? I had three cuts on my face. I was dazed, I went down, that's why I ended up on the ground. I didn't end up on the ground for no reason. I ended up on the ground because I was hitting the face, I was dazed, I lost control of the dog. What do you think the dog did? The dog just saw this guy threatening the face with a helmet. Pulled him, so sad, I was traumatized over it. I grabbed Bo, I got control of him, I tore him off. And then I backed up and I looked at the victim and I said, are you okay? And he went like this and he said, he said, I, I think so. And I said, and that, and then I, so I don't know, I'm injured because of the adrenaline going and this thing happened. The whole thing took thirty seconds and it was over. And next thing you know, I had blood pouring down my face. So I looked at him and I said, and, you know, understandably, he was scared of the dog, hold on to the dog. So I looked at him and I said, am I, am I bleeding? And it felt like my eyebrow was flapping. And I said, you know, I asked him, I said, how bad is my cut? Am I, am I bleeding bad? And he just looked at me, he didn't answer me, you know, he said, you're bleeding. And I said, are you okay again? And he said, I think so. He said, we should change, exchange information. I gave him my number and when I talked, when I talked to Sergeant, um, Matt, one number was wrong on the number, okay? I'm known in the town, I'm now, don't forget, this is Great Brook Farm, I walk my dog there daily, daily for two years. People there know me, they know Bo, they know my dog. I did not, I was accused by the dog officer fleeing the scene. Yeah, when I first met with him, he said, it sounds to me like he fled the scene. I said, that is not, that is not true, I would never do that. And I said, and he wasn't bleeding, he had a smudged, smudged in blood right here. So I gave him my information, he told me he was okay. I, I felt it was the best thing was to get the dog, you know, out of the area, not a situation right here. And he had my phone number. I returned to Great Brook Farm the next day with the dog, walked on leash. The dog has not been off-leash since that, okay? And I walked him for a full week after that. I got a phone call from the police and then I found out, you know, that I met with the, with the dog officer. But that's what happened to that.
Okay, and the final incident, you want to say something about that?
I was the one that reported the bite to the police, that incident, okay? We hired Modesto Landscaping, who has been mowing our lawn for over two years. They come weekly, they did our spring cleanup, our fall cleanup. They know we have dogs. They know because I bring the dog out on a leash to go to the bathroom every time they're there weekly. We hired them to do, they've never been inside my home, ever, because they're landscapers. We hired them to do an outside wall in front of my yard. And they were working on the wall and I can show you. So they're working on the wall, I'm home, I pull up that day, I pull up with my daughter, we go in the house. I said, and they saw me because I have to pass them in order to get in the front, into the door. We don't use the front door, we only use the mudroom door, which shows the picture. And I said, the wall looks great. I go in with my child, David leaves with my other child to go to the barn and says, do you want me to close the garage? And they said, no. We never gave him permission to go inside our house. We let them store the materials for the stone wall that they were building in the garage. Now, mind you, I had just received notice that we were having a dangerousness hearing. Like the day before this incident. This incident was on a Tuesday. On Monday, I found out we were having a dangerousness hearing, okay? So I'm in my house, my daughter's in the, in the living room, the two dogs sitting with her. I'm about to get on my Peloton. And all of a sudden, I hear my daughter start screaming. She heard and she's here, she can testify on what she heard, she told the police, it's in the police report, the police met with her. She was sitting on the couch, she heard the door open, Bo went running, ran to the guy and then was outside. And by the time I got outside, he was holding a metal rake jabbing at my dog. It was, oh, it was done, he had the chance, he was outside. The dog got outside of the house because he opened the door. I never told him, I have pictures of inside my garage, the police saw the inside of my garage when they came. There's another door from the garage, from the garage. This is inside my garage. There's a door that leads to the backyard, the backyard that they had to go in every single day to mow the lawn, to pass the beware of dog sign, just everything. And they chose to go through my house while I'm home. All they had to do was knock on the door and tell me they were leaving instead of coming through my house. And so he got bit.
Our nine-year-old daughter was upstairs, the dog was way that deep, all right? So when he entered our home, the dog jumped up.
The dog was protecting our house.
The dog chased him, just like any dog would do. He chased him outside, the guy picked up a rake, Bo bit him in the arm, that was it. He didn't repeatedly bit him, he bit him once in the arm, but he entered our home.
Without permission.
Would have settled that.
All he had to do was knock on the door.
And it says in there that I gave him permission to enter our home. I never gave him permission to enter our home, there was no reason for him to be in our home.
He could close the garage and go out.
Garage, we had a back door in the garage, he sort of went out that door. I showed Sergeant Matt that, he never put that in his report, I showed him. There's the back door, that's where he was supposed to go up, he was never supposed to enter our home. So the, if he went out the back door, the walk would have been fifty yards instead of ten yards. So he entered our home, even if he entered the home and he heard the dog and he ran out and shut the door, he would have been fine. It's literally eight feet from door to door, but he ran out and left the door open.
Okay. That's how the dog got out. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm sorry he got hurt.
But you have to understand, to you it's a dog, to us it's Bo.
I, I think we do understand that from what you said.
We're all dog owners, so.
So, no, so the dog is a protective dog and after these incidents.
Into the public record, so you're going to have to send him a picture.
I'll send them.
Because no, it needs to be admitted for the public record.
Um, so yeah, let's see if we can wrap up your part if possible, thanks.
We've already instituted multiple, the dog is back in training, the trainer's here, he's going to talk to you about it. After the incident with, with Jamie and her daughter, no one's allowed to just walk into our house. We have beware of dog signs, the dog is, um, I'm going to add another gate to the inside of my house. I mean, that way, if someone, the problem is, a dog can't tell if someone's there to just run through or is there to harm us.
Just let me, we can, we've heard that, let's just, one question for you.
Yeah.
You've had the dog since two thousand nineteen.
Yes.
Four reported incidents in the last like, uh, in a five-month period, not, not nineteen, not twenty?
Yeah.
Not till May, what, in your mind, if something happened, that suddenly there's four incidents? Now, there's all reasons, I get it, but there's four incidents that happened.
Two of them, with the two contractors, were absolute horrible bad luck, they shouldn't have entered. I do everything I can. You know what I mean?
I know what you mean, but there's four, I'm just saying.
You were asking a question, we're trying to answer.
Like that's, that's, nothing else, you can ask the trainer, that he hasn't changed any other way. I think it's honestly been a horrible, like, I, we keep.
I could parade, I could have brought literally a hundred people in here. I could, I'm just telling you, I could have brought a hundred people in here. They would have, they would have took up three hours testifying that my dog was friendly. Every contractor that worked on our home, I work with them, I'm an electrician, they've been around my dog. Like, if I brought my, if I brought my dog in here right now, he would wag his tail and walk up to everyone in here. He's not a vicious dog, he's not a dangerous dog.
Now that we see that he is very protective, he is a protective dog. Uh, if you come in my house and you just barge in, he's protective, he might take it the wrong way. We've instituted these things on our own, no one is allowed.
So is there anything new that you haven't told us yet about what have you instituted at your house? What's new, they haven't already said?
So, well, I'm going to put a gate in.
Yep, you said that.
At the top of the stairs inside my house.
Yes, you said that.
So that he can't do that, he's always on a leash.
Okay.
He's always on a leash.
When you take him out of the house?
From now on, he's never off-leash, ever, ever. From now on, he's never off leash, ever, ever. If a contractor is coming to our house the entire day, the dog will be on a leash or in the crate. Because I don't, now, I, I can't trust that people aren't, I, I should be able to trust that people won't come in my house without my permission, but I'm getting blamed for these people coming in my house who didn't have my permission. And, you know, it's hard. Yeah, they came in without permission just to do that. How did they, but the dog didn't know. What if it was someone coming in to physically harm my child? Like, the dog can't, can't tell the difference.
Yes. Okay, so is there anything else? Right, I, I hear you. Thank you.
Uh, no.
Anything else? Okay, so hold on, but that's the end of your testimony?
That is the end of mine. It's the trainer.
Okay.
Will say what he's been doing.
Okay. Um, then we'll hear from the trainer. Thanks. Uh, oh, I was supposed to swear you both in. Shoot, I didn't do that. My bad.
Well, you can do it now.
Yeah. I can't do it after the fact, though. Can I, Jenny? No, that doesn't do anything.
Does that mean testimony is inadmissible? What does that mean?
No, it just-
Oh, I can do it all over again.
No, please don't.
She didn't, she had just recommended I swear in everybody in addition to Jean, but it was only required that I swear.
Swear Danette.
Swear in Jean, so, um, well, anyway, come on up, um, and please introduce yourself and, uh, where you live.
Jamie can't, I spoke for Jamie because her, um, Ella's daughter is giving her a very difficult lifetime. I think she had to get an attorney. Hence why he called the police on me to try to get her. So she, on advice of her counsel in a legal matter with her, the father of her child, she couldn't speak to her. But she wanted to be here to show that she supported everything I said.
I'll, I'll be saying.
Oh, okay. Um, thank you. Um, if you would come forward, say your name and where you live and, um, and then I'm gonna swear you in.
My name's Daniel Vigent. I live in Chelmsford, Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you, Daniel. What's your last name?
Vigent.
How do you spell that?
B-I-G-E-A-N-T.
Thank you. So, uh, would you say after me, I, and then your name, do solemnly swear?
I, Daniel Vigent, do solemnly swear.
That the testimony I'm about to give-
That the testimony I'm about to be give-
Is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Daniel. Yeah. If you could make your statement brief, that would be great since we have a lot more on our agenda.
Um, yes, I want to speak on the behalf of Bo and his family here today that, um, I've been a, um, dog trainer for over ten years now. I've worked with Bo since he was approximately six months old. Uh, I have accompanied Dave multiple times in Great Brook Farm on training sessions. Bo has come to my house, interacts with my family, my dogs, neighbors, things like that. The dog has never been known to be aggressive or, uh, you know, show any tendencies of that nature that I've witnessed. My belief that he's not a dangerous dog seems to be a series of unfortunate events, you know, when people come into your household. No one would be able to get into my house without the chance of getting bit. I have four dogs of my own. A Doggo Argentino is a very family-oriented dog, you know, as opposed to some of the smaller dogs and things like that. So they are known to be very protective of their family and their property. Those are things that, you know, can occur. I have been working with the family to implement some of these new precautionary measures, you know, to prevent these types of things from happening again. The gate, you know, some extensive furthering the training. The dog has been with me since the last incident and has been getting further training. I've had him out around bicycles, rollerbladers, pet him out and, uh, no incidences have occurred.
Okay, thank you. And, um, Daniel, what's the name of your company?
Dog Boss Dog Training.
Dog Boss Dog Training, based in Chelmsford?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you, Daniel. Does anyone else want to offer, um, testimony? Yes. Please come on up and, uh, again, state your name and where you live.
Oh, honorable select board. My name is Jason Suterman. I live at fifty School Street. I'll be, uh, planning on accepting many candy donations this year for Halloween, by the way. Uh, my family and I moved here in twenty eighteen, August. And nearly immediately, my younger daughter, befriended summer, Shawna's younger daughter, and had an overnight nearly the first week of school. Um, shortly after, right about the time, uh, Bo showed up, um, we had continued overnights. We had multiple fun experiences. Uh, we would come over to the house, no big deal. They'd come over to our house, no big deal. Um, everything was very mellow. Um, I'm also a coach for NESCA, the New England Scholastic Cycling Association, which we practice three nights a week in season, the springtime, at Great Brook. And it's about forty kids. And we're all on bikes, about twenty adults, and we break out onto, in the, in the groups. And we ride. We're training for races. And on the, and the, that timeframe between five and seven is identical timeframe that Dave is walking both Bo and Comet, Comet, right? Um, and we bumped into him on several occasions, never an instance. And we're talking about kids from nine years old, my daughter included, my nine-year-old, up to about fifteen, sixteen years old, um, and multiple adults. And we're going all different directions because we're all different skill groups. Um, and we've never, ever had an incident with Bo. Even coming over a rise, there's Bo, big white Bo, and never a problem. So we're, you know, saddened, shocked, et cetera. Um, my daughter is also, every year that, uh, we've been here, we've had a birthday sleepover and multiple other sleepovers at their house, at our house. Um, and never an incident, never whatsoever. Everything's been very calm, cool, collected. Um, so this change is shocking. It's saddening. Um, you know, we take protocol as well, you know, beware of dogs. I'm a former owner of a Rhodesian Ridgeback who sadly he, well, happily he passed out here, not in Somerville, where we're from. Um, and he was a big dog, hundred pounds, no problem. And he had figured, he, he started to get triggered by a doorbell or a knock.
Okay.
And then-
Sorry, I, I do want to just have you keep, see if there's anything new you want to say about Bo.
With that, with that all closed, there was never an incident on our end. I would speak to the credibility of Shawna and Dave as far as being stand-up. They're there.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak? Please come forward and state your name and where you live. Thank you.
My name's Harry White. I live at ten thirty-two North Road in Carwell. I actually own four ninety-one South Street where my daughter lives. And I'm gonna cut this short because I, I know everybody's got issues. I've been briefed on the plan. I believe that Shawna and Dave are responsible adults. They understand the issue. And the plan is, is worthy, okay? We're in full support of the plan. There was a comment that, uh, somebody made with regard to Ella's fear. I want to just say that Ella's fear of dogs existed way before Bo. Ella's fear actually, in some respects, perpetuates an excitement. I have two dogs. I have two Goldens. And one's a jumper. And Ella will, when she comes over, tends to be really concerned, which causes more interaction, if you will.
Yeah.
So to that end, we're, we fully support the plan, uh, and we fully support Dave and Shawna.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have something new to say or offer? Um, Jean, do you have any comment at this point? Are you? Why don't you come up and just briefly say it into the mic? Thank you.
No one wants to be here having this hearing. You know, the, the circumstances that came into play to cause us to be here to discuss this are not pleasant. I, you know, I'm here out of a duty to the community to bring forth what I think is a legitimate claim for a hearing. And I leave it, uh, in your hands to, uh, make whatever decision you will make. I'm, I make myself available to you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jean. So our task right now as a select board is to determine whether to close the public hearing or to continue it to a later date. And one reason we could continue it is that we want the opportunity to read through things, you know, think about what the, uh, testimony has been and then continue the hearing, uh, at our next select board meeting. Um, were we to decide that we don't want to continue the hearing, that would mean that we are ready tonight to render a decision about whether or not, um, to categorize this as a dangerous dog or a nuisance, et cetera, as, as outlined in our, um, packet. So I'd like comments from the other members about whether we should close the hearing or continue it.
If I may-
Yes, Jenny.
Before you, uh, I, I recognize you may not be closing the hearing tonight, but one thing you probably should do before you close the hearing is just list the documents that people have been referencing that are going to be entered in as evidence.
Okay, either way, we should list those probably.
You should list them out. I mean, I know you have them in the packet, but you should probably list them out for the benefit of people attending the hearing.
Okay. So, shall we do that now before we, um, make a decision about whether or not to close the hearing?
Yeah, I would, I would do that before you close the hearing, for sure.
Okay.
Can you do it next time?
You could do it next time if you're not going to close.
Okay, so, um-
Have questions before you do that?
No, no, no.
What profits to the dog? What am I supposed to do with the dog?
Okay, hang on. We'll get, right, we'll get to that in just a second. So, uh, David, yours is supposed to hold in the hearing-
I'm very concerned with it. Yeah, we're gonna have to table certain things tonight.
You want to, um, continue the hearing till next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, new information was introduced right before the meeting, so I think everybody should have a chance to. I do have a couple of questions for council.
Yeah. Okay, so we are going to continue the hearing to our next select board meeting. Now, the question is, and Jenny, I, maybe you know the answer to this, if not, maybe Jean. The dog owner is asking, so what happens with the dog from now until the continuation of the hearing?
Well, so there is some discussion about whether or not the dog owners know about the temporary restraint order, which, which I, I mean, I've seen it, so I know it's been mailed. That should probably be, um, provided to them again because I think that that, I mean, that is in place for thirty days or until you guys make a decision. And could be extended if, you know, if thirty days passes. And the restraint, the temporary restraint order basically just says that the dog needs to be humanely restrained until the, um, the-
Hearing is concluded.
Concluded.
I had to remove the dog from the home. It's in the police report that I was told I needed to remove the dog from my home.
We were requested to. And we-
Yeah.
And I complied with that.
We'll, we'll, we'll agree to that.
So that's why I'm asking what the deal is right now with the dog.
So that is, if there is an order of confined, temporary confinement in place, um, I, you know, then, then that would also dictate what you do. An animal control officer could issue an order of temporary confinement as well.
Excuse me, excuse me.
This is our, this is our-
Jenny, finish. This is our town council, okay? Please let her finish. She'll have a chance, okay, afterwards.
Uh, so, you know, the, there are, there are a couple of options under the bylaw that, um, that allows the animal control officer to, um, to, to make sure that the dog is safe to the public while pending your decision. Because the, the statute, there's a, you know, there's this gap between when there's a complaint and when there's actual result, you know, determination under the hearing. So during that time, the animal control officer can issue a temporary restraint order, a temporary confinement order, or both. Um, and those are in effect until you guys have reached a decision or, or for thirty, in thirty-day increments.
Right. So currently, there is a temporary restraining order issued on the dog. And we will make sure that you have a copy of that. A new copy.
Manual of restraint.
That's it.
And that temporary restraining order requires humane restraint at all times, correct?
Yeah.
All right.
We agree to that.
We agree to that.
All right.
You don't have a choice.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, this isn't a discussion.
Yeah, that's the way it is. So whether or not you agreed, you'd have to follow it. But I'm glad you're, you're, you're going to follow it. Um, all right. Is that it, Jenny? Anything else we need to do if we're gonna continue the hearing? Do I just have to take a motion to continue it?
I would do that.
Can I ask for another?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I, you know, I mean, honestly, I, I don't know who the hell is telling the truth. It's, right? But if, if a property owner invites somebody onto their property, right, whether to do work or whatnot, right? Uh, and you have beware of dog signs, like, what, what is the, the rule there? Aren't you responsible for people who come to your property? I mean, uh, it, it seems like if you invite somebody on, regardless of a sign, I'm, I'm not asking you. I'm asking our council. Thank you.
Well, so, I mean, I think for you, for your purposes, what, what you're really asking is, um, you know, is are, are there grounds for finding a dog to be a dangerous dog, just, you know, based on somebody entering the property without permission? Uh, you know, there's, I mean, there's, there's multiple, there are multiple issues that can come out of this. You know, there are lawsuits and, and there's, there's, you know, which we're not really getting into right now. But what we're getting into is under the statute, which actually has very clear definitions of nuisance dog and dangerous dog. That the dog owner cited too. So the, a do, a nuisance dog just quickly, is a dog that by excessive barking or other disturbance is a source of annoyance to a sick person residing in the vicinity. Or by excessive barking causing damage or other interference, a re, a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment or has threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal or a person, but such threat or attack was not grossly disproportionate reaction under all the circumstances. So for the nuisance dog standard, I think what you're asking me, you know, what, what you would need to determine is if a person entering somebody's property and then being bit by a dog was grossly dis, a grossly disproportionate reaction under all the circumstances. Now, the dangerous dog standard is, a dangerous dog is a dog that either, without justification, attacks a person or a domestic animal, causing physical injury or death. Or behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic or owned animal. But you cannot be deemed dangerous solely based on growling or barking, or solely barking and growling based on the breed of the dog. If the dog was reacting to another animal or a person and the dog's reaction was not grossly disproportionate to, uh, any of the following circumstances. One, the dog was protecting or defending itself, its offspring, another domestic animal or a person from attack or assault. Two, the person who was attacked or threatened by the dog was committing a crime upon the person or the property or owner of the keeper of the dog. Three, the person attacked or threatened by the dog was engaged in teasing, tormenting, battering, assaulting, injuring, or otherwise provoking the dog. Or four, at the time of the attack or threat, the person or animal that was attacked or threatened by the dog had breached an enclosure or structure in which the dog was kept and apart from the public. So these are the exceptions that the owner was referencing. Um, and again, there's a a reasonable standard in here. And I think, you know, if you're going to continue the hearing, one thing that would be a good idea is for each of you to read the statute and, which I've just read. And, you know, and, because it's a lot to think about and digest as you're trying to decide, you know, what, under each circumstance, what was reasonable, uh, you know, what was what do you think actually occurred at that time? Was the dog's reaction reasonably justified or not? So, the answer to your question is, it depends.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Typical answer from town council.
Right.
You make that decision. Yeah.
So, uh, could I have a motion to, uh, continue the hearing till our next select board meeting?
Yeah, October twelfth. Yep. I move to continue the hearing till, only when, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So we'll continue this, um, at our next select board meeting in October and you'll receive a notice about the hearing. Weeks. You're certainly welcome to come back to the next select board meeting. You'll get notified the same way you did for this one. No, we will go- No, we'll be deliberating. We'll be deliberating. Based on the testimony we heard today.
I would take a look.
What, what the decision be?
It's whatever we did to decide, deliberate and decide.
Well.
Made publicly, based on the statute.
All right. I would be curious, thank you.
Yep. Okay.
We got to schedule.
Let's discuss a little bit here, yeah, what we've got here left, so we.
You got the poor school boards been waiting.
You guys have been waiting really patiently, and Sue Busk is also.
We know that you guys are all going and, oh, next, next year, you're all gonna come and join us right on the.
VA report we have to do, yeah.
Well, I wonder if we should.
Can we push cable?
Well, it's nine o'clock when she was supposed to present. So school committee, I hate, I really apologize for doing this, but we could, we could have you go ahead and do the doing part now and ask Sue Busk to wait and hear.
Yeah, I'm cheer.
She's out west, okay.
I'm cheer, I, I, I just corresponded with Sue. We'll get to reschedule her.
Okay.
So we'll have more time with the school board.
All right, so are you guys okay staying now? I know you probably have planned lots of other things. Jean, thank you very much for.
Bye.
Thank you, and Jenny, thank you very much.
Yep, signing off.
Very thankless job. We're gonna table our cemetery.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll, we'll do the discussion with the school department, and then we're going to, we'll table the.
Then we'll just wrap up.
Sue Busk, and we'll table the cemetery, and we'll still do the town administrator's report in the minutes.
Alan, he's snickering at us.
Oh. All right, Alan, we see you. Okay. Hi, Jack, nice to have you here. Hi, Carrie. Thanks for joining us and for patiently waiting.
You're welcome.
I'm sure it never happens.
I'm sure you found it very entertaining.
You get off. Off the timetable. All right, so, yeah, let's reorient ourselves here, members, and.
Let me frame it up.
Yes.
So we, we, Jack and I corresponded about, well, I should say is, preamble is, by the way, I see Amanda, Eva, and is Sarah here as well?
Hi.
Hi, Sarah.
Thank you very much.
Jim Moshe as well.
Oh, and Jim, hi Jim, okay. So thanks for attending, I'm sorry, we, this went a lot longer than we expected. However, we've locked, we've moved stuff away for you guys. One of our goals as a committee is to have more frequent reach outs to the other committees, especially the big committee, who will be in one of those. One, now in the beginning of the sort of school budget year, and then one probably later in the springtime after we think about what's happened and sort of plan for the next year. So, very happy to have you. Jack and I have corresponded, and I think you guys met also as a committee and talked about what you might want to talk about. So the kind of list, and we'll see how far in the list we get, but budget at a very high level, because we know your budget's not ready yet, but just talk about the ish, the budgetary issues in the town is one. Your goals, we've shared our goals, we'd like to hear your goals. I think you had a goal setting session, so we're interested in your goals. MFC, we've talked about notionally behaving as if we're sort of one MFC, even though technically it's still kind of separate. And how that would be kind of a trial year this year to see how that works. Technology, also, we share some resources and how that works. The Highland Building was one you brought up, and that's everybody's favorite topic, so. And then, master planning, yeah, I don't know how far down this list we'll get, master planning, you know, there's a big hearing tomorrow, so I'm not sure how much more we can add, but let's have a conversation. And finally, future enrollment revenue diversity, which certainly when I was on school committee, I was very, you know, interested in seeing if there was a alternative. So those are the topics, and I guess we'll start with budget and.
Do you want to frame it in terms of like, topics or time, in terms of, I mean, we could spend a lot of time tonight, is there a dotted line here that we should at least?
You know, I think, I would say from my view, the first three, maybe four topics, we should try to cover. Budget, we should, because this is budget season.
Budget is, is job one, I'd say, because that's the most.
So that's first. Goals is good, because we should share goals. And then sharing resources, which is part of all of this.
Yeah.
MFC and technology. If we get that far, I think we're doing well, and then.
Yeah, I agree.
I have one suggestion. Do you think we could frame, we could have, hear from you all about your goals first, just as a frame? That we, before we then get into the budget discussion?
Happy, happy to do that. These are a bit real time, in the sense that we haven't had a, a chance to sit down with the, what we would call a final draft, and discuss them at the last meeting. I think what I can do here, because I am also in the Zoom, is I can share my screen and, and that's helpful, we'll pull it up.
That'd be nice, to be able to see it.
But I, I do know these are not the voted approved school committee goals, these are, these are in final draft to be discussed and voted on at the last meeting. The way we've structured goals, at least in, in the last two years that I've been part of the school committee, we've, we've kind of dropped them into two groups. One is the core objectives, there's table stakes. We have to do superintendent evaluations, we have to do policy, we have to do budget. And then there are reach goals that we have kind of categorized in a secondary budget.
Excuse me, Jack, is it possible to enlarge that?
You can't see it?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I can see it from all the way back here.
No, 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 I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, that's because you're not wearing glasses and they're not all fogged up.
Oh, okay.
Let's try, let's try that.
It's my case, and I'm sticking with it.
Happy to do it. So with the, you know, with the support of the school committee behind me, I'll just walk through the core objectives quickly. Not reading them, but just talking them thematically. The, the big thing around the budget, and this will kind of carry to the next conversation, which is something that Jim and I have started working on with Scott Triola, which is more standardization of budget presentation. So we met with Scott today, and we're working towards a templated presentation of the school committee budget, using some best practices from prior years, trying to bring some standardization, so it doesn't look this way one year, this way the next. And I think is hopefully helpful for people to digest i- in a way where various people have asked for elements that I think have dropped. Last year is my only year through the process, it was a pandemic year, everything was weird. We were doing this not in October, we're doing it in February. We had all types of prepays and ester funds and grant money and a lot of moving parts, it's kind of, plus we were coming off of a level funded, level bud, what is the right term?
Level budget.
Level, yeah, and so in that particular case, just with contractual arrangements we had in place, you know, that were already driving much of the budget, everything we had was gonna look a little bit higher than normal. We're trying to bring some normalcy here. And so year to year, apples to apples, to the best we can. And, and that's what we'll do largely around the budget. I don't think I need to touch on policy and superintendent evaluation, those are fairly straightforward and really haven't gone through. We continue to deal with the COVID-19 response at the school. There are a number of things that are being directed at the state level. I guess even the federal level to some degree, as to what birth we have to make decisions in, around, and under. And those continue to evolve. In fact, it was a, a mandate of sorts around the, just to simplify, I'll just call it mask usage through the end of September, that has now been extended through the end of October. So there's less latitude for us to make local decisions, it's really, these are statewide decisions that are being made. But I think we're very aware, as both committee members and parents, around this not being singular, this is multi-dimensional. We have effects around the kids' mental health, learning outcomes, educational experiences, all which are being impacted right now. And, and I think, you know, to, to not address that front and center is, is, is not realizing the kind of situation we're in, because these kids' lives are affected every day. The, the next point is why we're here. I mean, this is something that I think is a townwide initiative. I put it in here as, as, as a must-do kind of table stakes for this year, because the wheels are already in motion. And as David said, we've, we've had some meetings already, we plan to have another meeting in the spring, and this is, this involves even things such as the municipal facilities committee, the technology committee, it's just more less siloed, more cross collaborative work. And that's something that is just rolling with the town, hopefully. This is a collective bargaining year, so on top of everything else, we, we need to get this done. This again is table stakes, we can't not do it. This is not optional. We have, you know, we will be starting conversations on that front very soon. And our goal is to establish a timetable, I don't know what the, again, this is draft, I don't think we'll probably meet March, it'll probably be more like April. But our goal is not to obviously run this too late, we want to line up with the budget process, so we understand what the implications of this agreement are with regards to the budget, so. But think about it in the March-April timeframe, we'd like to wrap this up, not run it all the way to the end of the fiscal year, which is not desirable for anybody.
So you know, we're also starting our police negotiations, and we have a similar timetable.
All right. Finally, again, it's, it's in the top section here, because we think we have a fairly young committee. We need to, I think, do a, a bit of a, a job to get more educational awareness around what our responsibilities are, so we've called in MASC to do some educational training. We can probably do more, we have a number of committee members that'll be attending the annual convention coming up. And we're gonna keep looking for other opportunities to elevate our knowledge and awareness, there's lots of things we don't know. And.
Yeah, that's fair. I don't, I don't think there's enough of that in town boards, you know, I mean, it's, it's really great to hear.
It, it really energizes you. I was on the school committee, I was doing it years ago, but I, I loved all those things, because you come back and you have such great ideas, and and then you feel like, you know, you're centered, and you know so much more about how to maybe achieve some of those goals.
Yeah, and we have, you know, 350 plus towns in the state all doing things, and best practices that you can pull from, you know, to reinvent the wheel.
Exactly.
So I, I envision a lot will come from that. And then we have a reach bu- bucket, and, and I would say that already at 10 objectives for the year, this, this lift seems, this is too much. But I didn't know how to distill it any further, but prior to our next meeting as a group. So this is what we have. Community outreach is something that we have had conversation about for the last two years, since I started, partly because it's a, I think, call it a something that I feel strongly about. It's something I talked about when I ran for school committee, because I was seeing sort of more and more of a disconnect between those that had kids in this, in the CPS school system and those that did not. Lot of, the cost of educating kids today, and the complexity of educating kids today, is far different than it was 20, 30 years ago. And there are no shortage of, I, I think, you know, challenges around it, that even I, you know, even I, and I'm pretty close to it, I'm always sort of amazed at, at what we need to go through. And to, to I think, not let the conversation happen at the town vote around budget, but to really have the conversation happen well in advance of that, in terms of questions and understanding, is the objective. So Jim and I are working on a fall conversation and a spring conversation, hopefully in person and over Zoom, reaching out to groups like Council on Aging, men's groups in town, League of Women Voters, any groups that, you know, generally have representation without too much linkage to the school, that otherwise maybe wouldn't have the, the time to ask questions of school committee members. I'm on. And, and hopefully, again, sort of akin to this idea of more cross communication across the whole town, as outlined above. Special education continues to be a huge topic, effectively, I don't know, any district that's exempt from this is a major topic. Navigating it, being able to do it well, meeting the needs of today's students, which I think are only increasing. And we could spend a lot of time talking about why that's happening. But I, for the sake of the conversation today, it just is, and we have to address it. And it, it's something people have lots of questions about, and we have a subcommittee that manages it on a sort of a, a more close touch process, but we, as this school committee, you know, know this is a top priority in the town. And then lastly, the visioning subcommittee work. So there has been a fair amount of work done, leading right up into the pandemic, around visioning. Unfortunately, I don't know that we made a lot of progress last year around visioning, largely because we, we spent so much time dealing with the pandemic. Although certainly balls were moved forward, it, it, it wasn't a, a top one, two, or three topic. I think we'd like to see more effort put in here, largely around the idea of building a plan that incorporates the elements of the visioning plan into a sequenced five-year vision. This year, we're gonna work on this topic, next year, we're gonna work on this topic, and sort of do some, you know, call it capital planning for thought and knowledge and visioning. And, because we're probably trying to row on all four, or five, or six fronts at the same time, we'll lead to no outcomes, so let's pick one rock a year and, and deal with it sequentially, and decide what that order is this year, and, and start to work at one of it. So hopefully that was helpful. Again, this is still in draft, this is needing to go through a conversation. I hope I represented other committee members' feelings and thoughts here accurately, because I just tried to summarize notes off of that last one. We haven't had time to discuss what you're seeing here today.
Good, thanks, yeah.
David, did you share our goals, other than our goal, well, all of the goals, other than our goals, or just kidding?
The whole document.
Oh, you did, okay, good. I just want to be sure that this.
And also, by the way, we have, not with the region, but I should have asserted.
Okay, great.
I would say I like, you know, I really like the way you have structured kind of the must-dos, like the annual must-dos, and then the other must-dos, and then, you know, you're reaching, because we should always be reaching. We've gone through that same thought, so I like your phrase, you know, capital plan for visioning, so, you know, I like the philosophy that you're expressing, so. That's very much in line with the way we are trying to.
We'd like that to come out in, you know, obviously, future meetings with other, other committees in town, and certainly at our town outreach events. You know, they, they understand that we were balancing on a lot of things. And we are trying to be methodical about it, and we understand that, you know, education is a huge draw for, for people in this town, it's a, it's a major pillar where we, we don't, we don't have a lot of other things, but we have amazing open space, we have amazing education. And we try to take that stewardship pretty seriously, and we want others to feel that a lot of thought goes into this, it's not, it, it's not just accidental that Carlisle, Carlisle ends up the way it does at the end of the year.
On you, you know, that rolls back into your community outreach, and I think, and I made the point, too, and I made the point to some of you there, too. The pandemic has hurt that, because the kind of events like spaghetti supper and the cultural prayers and those things that would bring non-parents to the school, we haven't had that. The touch points about the school, we all, I think, intellectually, most citizens agree with you, education is very important, but once their kids leave the system, they begin to lose touch with the, what really makes it right, you know, and it's great to, I mean, it's work, but I think we all need to do that. We're saying the same thing about town government, you know, we've got to, people say, yeah, well, you know, town, well, we're a lot of volunteers and people come up, you know, so we want to engage people, so they're part of that process, and we understand and we appreciate, so I think, I support that sort of.
Good, let's move on.
So I, I probably moved to the budget, it's sort of the next topic. I've already touched on some of this, I don't know how deep you want to go, again, we, we are working towards end of October, I think, presentation to FinCom, I hope we're not speaking out of turn, please correct me if, if I am, Jim. But the, the, the process is underway under sort of normal timing conditions this year, trying to get it back on the rails. There are some big, big rocks for us, include, including the collective bargaining agreement, that we will be the drivers, you know, most of what drives a budget is contractual. There ends up generally, and again, I'm speaking with one year of experience, but at the end, it generally ends up being a couple hundred thousand dollars that we're really talking about at the end of the year, from the budget of our size, in terms of can we do this, could we do this, or could we do it another way? So much of it is really driven by what's, what's already in place under, under these contracts, so we will, we'll take our, we'll go through that process over this year. David is, or Jim, is there anything else on the budget that I'm omitting or that we could share today? I, I know we're really just getting going here, so I, I, I know there's not a lot of meat.
No, you're pretty, pretty on point, Jack. I think just the timeline, we're hoping to have a, an initial presentation for the school committee on the 13th. And I think meeting with Scott today, we are gonna meet with the FinCom at the end of October. But I think, as you said earlier, just the idea of having that template. But I think, as you said earlier, just the idea of having that template of the slides that they would like to see in the presentation is very helpful and I think just that collaboration collaboration is going to move it forward smoothly.
Can I just ask, Jim, do you what do you have yet a sort of a number or a range of students that you're thinking you're going to have for the next fiscal year?
So we have, we had, we had projections, right? But each year we have to adjust those projections and this year the numbers are higher than we were had projected for for this year. So we have to make some adjustments. So we really don't have a set number, but we should, we're thinking our earlier projections had this year coming in around six hundred and we're at about six fifteen. So just looking at next year, we're probably going to be in a similar space. We have such a large K class came in this year. I mean, we had, we have seventy-five students. We thought we would have probably, you know, sixty-five with those students that didn't enroll last year, but the number just really just jumped up on us. So that that changes our projections and then makes us think differently about next year and how that will come in. So we don't really have the new projections for this cycle. We will have some newer projections for the presentation on the thirteenth. But we're probably going to be looking in in that same space, six oh nine to six fourteen or so.
Yeah. Do you use like a three-year rolling average or what?
Well, actually, we have multiple projections. We use Nesdaq provides us with one of the their projection and then we we developed our own formula based on somewhat like that, a rolling average of the years. So we we look at, but we use both of those and then we look at the past. What we usually see is a is a slight increase in the each class size over the course of the eight-year span through through the district. So we factored that into it too. But as I said, this year's projection, we we were short of what we actually have.
Yeah.
People know that, you know, a lot of parents like Jack was saying, parents of five-year-olds made the decision to wait out.
Right, right, right. You know, I would have retrodoted my kid frankly. But I just just from experience, I find that tea leaves are better than crystal balls. So just just so you know, for those projections.
Yeah, it's probably all is close, right? They're they're all as valid as.
And Jim, what about the sort of current teaching model that you're using for the middle school? Do you expect that to continue? I'm just thinking about possible regardless of whether the population of students changes, that you might change some of the configuration of teachers based on whether you're changing that model?
Yeah, well, we we started that a couple of years back and the challenge is as we have these these class sizes that come through, like every other year of eighty or seventy-five, like it it really doesn't support changing that model at the middle school level so much, right? Because we're adjusting back like this year. This year, we went back to the dyad model. We had tried the triad model in fifth grade two years ago. And then last year, we went to a modified dyad because of because of the pandemic and in school and remote classes. But then this year, with the fifth grade being as large as it is, we went back to the dyad because that that makes the most sense for that size class coming through. So it's, again, we're in that space where it looks like that middle school model with the four set, you know, your four core subjects being what they are are kind of make the most sense at this moment in time.
So are you anticipating? I mean, I know you can't really tell till you know the numbers of incoming students, but if if your projection, if you're in the same range as this year in terms of the total number of students, do you think you will be sticking with the same number of teachers and assistants? Or you already have an understanding that you're going to need more or less?
So right, right, as we get into in-depth conversation, I'm really, so the the principals and the director, they're working with the faculty and staff to identify their kind of overall needs. And we're going to have our admin meeting on the budget is going to be scheduled for next Tuesday afternoon. So really, like, that's the time we're going to be gathering up even those basic numbers. I think one of the things Jack spoke about, even when we went with Scott this afternoon is is we we do have a fairly full contingent of faculty and staff from last year, right? This what we put in the budget last year that is this year FY twenty-two, right? We we did, we do have a full complement of teachers. So I'm not expecting to have like this large increase of demand for additional teachers at this point in time. I think we have a fairly full complement. One of the variables, when you talk about aids, that is a that is a variable that year to year, month to month, that can change, right? As some children need some additional supports and and other children come off of those additional supports, that's a that number fluctuates more than our regular faculty and staff. So we'll just, and that's hard to predict. Those are one of those variables really hard to predict in September or in next September, right? We're a year out trying to figure out what the exact needs of some children are going to be. So that's one of our more, our greater challenges.
All right. Thanks, Jim.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions about the budget?
Well, you know, from the high level, so I mentioned in my notes to you, Jack, you know, we have a tension. We ourselves make a goal for the town of what we're high-quality education. That ranks high and so does fiscal restraint. Those things are, you know, basically at odds all the time. So well, two years ago, as you mentioned, was a flat budget. And in the last town meeting was a significant increase and there was a whole pile of reasons that led to that. Was it seven percent or some number like that? So I know the Jim Dar and the FinCom certainly have signaled to us that that's not a sustainable path. I think the challenge is, as you met, I mean, I I guess personally, having been through it, I wouldn't I would sort of table the CTA piece. That's just off on its own thing. I mean, you just have to look at the budget like the way it organically grows anyway, because you kind of know this without giving away the story, you you know, the range of steps and calls. So you can make that assumption that that's fairly consistent. But as you, you know, the sped, trying to balance, trying to balance all those things you're talking about and hold it to a number that working with FinCom that they can, you know, bring in, that's really the hard part. I I would just say having been in all three seats, right, the FinCom, the board, the school board and the select board, you gotta you gotta figure out almost in advance with FinCom what the right limit is.
Yeah, I think.
And and work, work the pieces inside that envelope.
I, you know, again, I I have one year of experience. So like, I I don't have, I I can't speak contextually very broadly, but I think it came up in the conversation with Scott Trill today is just looking at it a little bit less on a yearly basis, but looking at it on a five-year basis. And what is the, what is the annual increase when you look at it over a five-year period of time? Where where you have a two, a zero and a, at the end of the day, it still ends up in a range that makes more sense because I think looking year to year, there are going to be years where we have to funds drop out, you know, like some of our budget is being propped up by 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 external funding sources that may or may not be around. We have elements of prepay that are happening or not happening. We have elements of you know, school class sizes coming in or out. We have elements of a pandemic. We have elements, but I think trying to put also a little bit of focus on what's it look like over a five-year span of time as opposed to
Right, but okay. Yes, you can do that. But like you, I don't know if you're hearing, Tim Kane was showing the bond, but I guess you were. You know, five, 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 two, two, two. No, you can't do that, right? You can't say, oh, I'm gonna, I'm giving you five now and you'll get it two percent later. You can do that and that's okay, but but we, but you're coming off a high budget increase and we're straining. So even if you, inside that context, you still have to look at, you can't like cherry pick like, I'm going to ignore last year's seven. I'm going to start fresh curve now.
I think we're back looking at the last five.
Yeah.
I mean, we're back, adding in the last four, and then this is the fifth, adding last four, looking at the fifth, looking at that way. I mean, I think we're always struggling to to show like what the real, it's very, you know, I think it's not accurate entirely to say it was a seven percent increase in the sense of.
No, because it was the lag. That's I said.
So I think we have to do a good job, whether it's individually with a committee or whether it's in the in our our school committee presentation that gets reported to the town in the mosquito, or whether it's in a townwide presentation, like we're planning on doing this fall and in the spring, and really communicating some of the, you know, contextualizing this, coloring it, giving reference points. Because nothing is as ever simple as one variable and one one data point. And and I and I think it's often those soundbites get propagated in a way that is, you know, just not constructive or productive for for a deep enough understanding of what's going on. And I I just want to try to do whatever we can to do our best job. Anything else on the budget? So again, we'll have a meeting the middle of October, a FinCom, and then I guess we'll, you know, we can have some more conversation.
The FinCom is part of the marathon session, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm going to, yeah.
So we get on that meeting at the end of October?
Yep.
Okay. So on the heels of that, if needed.
Tim, we're posting that. Schedule?
Either October twenty-fifth or twenty-seventh.
Yeah, both of those.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think, you know, we should be able to go, three of us, if we have to, or want to. I see. Yes. So they should always be posted.
And by the way, if you want to, you should do the same.
In fact, and then did we get that letter? We've gotten a copy of the letter, right? Yes, yes. It shows the dates and the proposed hearing times. Right, I know. Yeah.
So we could, we could talk about MFC and technology. So I guess a couple of things and and Jim, I'm going to need to lean on you a little bit here, but I'll I'll try to do a decent job. Makes, you know, the participating in this facilities committee, Carrie is graciously taking, taking that one on for us. So hats off to her. Makes a lot of sense. I really liked the capital planning process that we went through last year. Being a commercial real estate guy, it's very sort of near and dear. We do that in hotels and everything else, just like thinking about with our clients, like what's what's needed and I'm not looking at it on a year, but what's out over the next ten years. So I love that the town is doing that and 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 rolling in the conversation with the schools' needs as well. So we have participation, makes a ton of sense. And and I think we're here to just support and be part of that. I think Jim and I'll let you speak and add more detail, but I think we have more kind of like questions and and detail that's probably needed around how we combine technology resources. I think that one for us is is Jim, I'll let him speak and there's a school committee. Maybe we just don't know enough detail about how that would work. But obviously, the school has a lot of technology sort of, you know, needs to support to support kids. I don't really understand maybe all the collective efficiencies or benefits of drawing it under one hood, but that one is, I think, the one that would we we'd seek to pilot in some way or explore a little bit more before just pushing all in like we're we're pushing all in on that municipal facilities committee. Jim, do you want to add anything to that? Sure. I I guess just initially, just the idea that yeah, the schools are looking to collaborate with the rest of the town and how we can do things more economically, more efficiently and make these these programs work. I think with regard to municipal facilities, it's really pretty evident that working together, we can possibly have a more effective, more efficient process. And we're taking those steps to move that forward. I think we had a meeting on on October fourth, we're going to get together with the municipal facilities committee and really dedicate that meeting towards exploring this and vetting this and coming up with a a plan and a timeline to move that proposal forward. That's with regard to the big picture municipal facilities committee. Then there was coming from the municipal facilities committee, there was a conversation around technology and the possibility of some type of unified technology department, which was kind of our first exposure to it was Scott Hefner came to me after reading an article in the mosquito and we were both taken aback by it. So we thought we needed to learn a little bit more because we want to just understand and be involved and be supportive. So we reached out and we, Scott and I both started attending the technology committee for the town. I think Tim's Tim's on that committee. We were there last week and looking to just be more engaged with that. So just be more engaged to have those conversations so that we can learn and see how a collaboration, I think we collaborate now pretty well, but we really haven't stressed that collaboration, but how that might be mutually beneficial to the schools and the town as we identify the needs and move forward. So that is something where we're happy to explore. We're engaged in exploring that. But it's just a little more ambiguous than the municipal facilities committee, which is fairly concrete. We can understand and see really readily how that collaboration might allow us all to be more effective and efficient. That may, that's that's our position in those. And we're looking forward to just getting some of the groundwork done around municipal facilities. I think we've had some conversations and there've been documents shared, people have done some research and how it's worked in other towns. But I'm just looking forward to meeting on the fourth, that we can really just just start having that more open dialogue of the reality of how this might look and how we can make it work for next year. Because I think we'd like to start piloting it next year, if we could.
So the question was, David, the the meeting on the fourth is the municipal facilities committee and the school and Tim would get together and talk about, you know, is this a good idea? What if it is, what are the first steps? What do we need to do? What are the Yeah, yeah. And I just want to say about the IT when the municipal facilities was talking about and what got imported, kind of, I wouldn't say it was out of context, but it was I, and I think it was Steve Hinton was saying, gee, maybe when we're talking about, you know, this, there's all that infrastructure, all that fiber optic cable, the fact that our, the town servers are actually at the school and that we're all going to need a new phone system. And wouldn't it be nice if instead of, again, doing it in silos and you do one side, you know, phones, we do another one? Wouldn't it be nice if we did that IT together? And that's how that IT got kind of rolled in a little bit into the municipal facilities as 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 a facility in certain respects that.
But even before that, for years, I mean, Scott's been helping down.
Yeah, this this just would codify it and 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 kind of, you know, regularize it and yeah, that's all. That's, so I just wanted to kind of give you that background.
I want to circle back to MFC. So my understanding is that the the sort of capital planning process has been done already, has been done together, right? School and the needs of the town.
Yeah. A million a year.
Yeah, Dave, I was just, yeah, so Rob and Steve Bastick had worked last year to get the five-year capital plan, which is a five-year long-term capital plan for the unified town, which includes the town and the school buildings.
And by the way, Jim, I want to say we really appreciate having had access to Rob, you know, the past couple of years, because he certainly has helped the MFC on a number of occasions and certainly has helped with Steve and bringing him kind of up to speed and look forward to continuing our working together. So.
Want to take on the Highland Building? Sure.
I probably should stop after that.
Let's let's stop after.
We can finish up our last little bit. Can we give it back to you?
Yeah, well, honestly, it it actually came came up in the last school committee meeting. As a, as a question around like, well, would it make any sense to take it back and start to really use it for, I don't know that you have a knowledge of a particular use for it. But but let me just step back from it for a sec because I, having now participated in the Highland Committee meetings, having conversations with some of the members over the last, really just four weeks and 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 processing it a little bit more. But yet not knowing the twenty-plus year history of it just being this bad at topic. If if it's okay, I'm going to, I'm going to give David credit for this suggestion because I I think it's one that's missing from the conversation. There's not there's a, there's some planning that's gone into the idea of what could we use the building for? And that was a study that was approved. I think the select board approved it and we went through and we have now some cost estimations for commercial space. uh, residential-type apartments and demolitions. Those are kind of like three costs that we know with regards to the Highland building at present time. What is, is, seems to be lacking, and again, David pointed this out to me a week or two ago, was, there's really no vision for what would the world be like without the Highland building there? Like, planning into what a landscape architect or a designer would do with that space for the benefit of the town or the school? Because I think the idea of demolition, um, doesn't really, there's no, there's no vision around demolition. The vision is around like, what would the space be used for if?
People visualize a hole in the ground with a lot of concrete blocks, uh, kind of strewn.
And, and I think to, to hopefully end up at the end, like, there has to be a wide spectrum of options. The good news is that, all by all accounts, from the, the people that looked at the building, the work that was done, the four hundred thousand that was spent is doing its job. The roof is in good shape, the exterior building envelope is in good shape, the interior is not diminishing.
I don't know, the interior is diminishing.
At, at a rapid pace, had the work not been done.
Oh, well, maybe not as rapidly.
It's not falling apart in a way.
While we did it, it's not.
The work is, the work that was done is, does have some value. Um, I think, A, I struggle with kind of understanding urgency in a timeline. This could literally be battered around for another twenty years, it sure seems like, um, in terms of not having an outcome. I think, uh, we have tried with the school committee to understand a rubric of sorts of the way we would look at the building, uh, things that would be under our purview and things that would not. I don't know that cost is necessarily a purview of the school committee, so much as it is safety, operational issues with the school, ongoing complexity of managing it, uh, uh, in terms of somebody participating in some type of oversight board or whatever it would be. Um, but we're trying to understand what, what the evaluation criteria would be before we look at things. Um, I can share that, I think, in speaking for all committee members, that there's the most questions around it being used as an apartment-type building. Um, that one is really tough for, I think, the school and committee members to wrap their head around, because there's just so much detail around the way in which who would be in, and what would be the criteria, and what, even what the violation board would look like, with the oversight, because I think those are all questions. And then there's the operational question outside the building where there's not a lot of parking. And how many you, you know, all, all these types of details, I think, come up. And, uh, there's, I think, one other thing I was thinking about with the Highland building. I can't think of it right now. So, those are just some things that we've worked through the, the group, we've got sort of the rubric, concerns around apartments that we've asked for more detail before, I think we can offer. What we certainly don't want anybody to do is spend a whole lot of time and effort going down a path that is ultimately not really going to garner the support of the town, uh, financially, or effectively be feasible from a school perspective. And that's, I think, one of the, the challenges we're the position in right now.
So we, we authorized, they, we gave them ten grand or six grand.
Yeah, for the, the, the.
And we, they, or somebody wanted to make sure the school committee agreed, which I think you did take a vote to agree.
No, no.
Not.
No.
Okay. And is a school committee member on, is there a school committee rep on it, I think?
I am acting as the school committee rep. I don't, we have not ratified me as such, in, in media, I don't believe we've had that vote yet.
Christine was on it.
Christine was on it.
Melissa's on it, right?
Yeah, Melissa McMurrough.
So you have people who understand. And what is their timeline?
What is the timeline?
We gave them some PIN money, and they're gonna do something.
Yeah, they're supposed to come back with a report.
Like when?
Um.
FinCom meeting, or?
No, I think before, then, before then. Yeah, before Valentine is heading up that group.
Yeah, I mean, the, the report is in, the cost estimates are known.
Yeah.
Um, they've given a presentation, so I would.
Yeah, so.
Is there, to your point, is there an open space option in that ballot?
There wasn't one that, that's been laid out. There wasn't one. There's really just sort of three. Demo for X, apartments for Y, commercial space for Z.
And there is a cost, I just want to, sorry, um, there is a cost for just leaving it as it is. Because, uh, every time the fire alarm goes off, um, it costs us four hundred dollars for the, the guys to come and turn it off. Um, there's a lot of, um, humidity in there. It was being used, you know, for storage. They took the stuff out because it was growing green fur on it. Um, and then there was, there was water damage because the, you know, the dehumidifier overflowed, you know, so it is not a,
It costs free.
Thing to do nothing.
But, but virtually. So, um, but the, the demo to do X is just that demo?
That's what I understand, it just leave it, I, I would assume maybe.
I think the conversation's always just on parking. Turn it into a parking.
Yeah, well. I don't think so.
Well, no, but that's what the, I mean, that's what, I don't know if this was recent, but it was always pared down and paved. So, are you in a position as a member of that committee that you can influence them to include that? An alternative that's better than X?
Yeah, because that would be important.
I've, I've, I've brought it up. I think it'd be helpful if they heard that from another committee, perhaps this committee.
We have a rep on HBC?
No, we don't. That, I mean.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on a Highland.
You're on a Highland?
Yeah, they moved it to Thursday, though, so I haven't been able to make the last two. It usually'd be Mondays, so.
Oh, 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 sorry.
Yeah, Luke, would you, are, I'm communicating with John about taking a look at that question?
Yeah. Do they have any money left after the talk?
I don't know, Leah, I said I missed the last two meetings. Yeah, I, I don't think it's gonna be incredible, because you gotta obviously.
But, but what would be useful, I think, in that dialogue, since it's your property, is what would the school want?
Yeah.
Right. I mean, you almost don't need the HBC to do it. You, you guys could, among yourselves, say, all right, you know, when my kids were littler than your kids, there was a, you know, there was a school building right there, right? There was the old, uh, whatever it was called.
No, no.
Right, so, not at Highland, of course, but, you know, next.
You're talking about the kindergarten, first grade.
Yeah, yeah, that octagonal thing.
The octagonal thing.
And that went away, and now we can't even imagine what it's like, but so, you know. Would you have a, a, instead of the, not instead of, but in addition to the paved playground, not paved, I know you got the castle, but I mean, you know, I would be interested in what the school thinks of the opens, how the school would use the open space to just enhance its, you know, you don't have a lot of unpaved outdoor recreation space, as an example. So, I, I don't know, you know, I'm just saying, jungle gym, who, who knows, discovery space, I, I don't know, but it would be great if you guys spent a little time and folded that back to HBC, so that when we consider the range, demo to X has an X.
Yeah.
That's my.
Yeah.
And I, and I will have to credit, I think, uh, well, I, I would say it's kind of along the lines of what, uh, Eric told us the other day.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a great building, everybody loves a building, but at the end of the day, it's sticks and bricks, right? That happens to be land in the mo, one of the most, you know, central pieces of land in the town. And if we, if you just get past, it is a great building, but if we cannot economically find a there, there for that structure, we still have the land.
Yeah.
Thank you, David.
We can, um, we can, uh, we can take some ownership of that. Um, Jim, we'll, we'll talk more, maybe add it also to the next, um, school committee agenda.
Absolutely, and it's, it's, it makes, it connects with the idea that we also have a committee working on the castle, and looking at some green space in that area, so there might be an intersection there, too.
Yeah, it would, I think it'd really be helpful if we got direction from the school committee as to what their vision is.
A giant sandbox.
Yeah, no, too many cats.
But sand is so great for kids. Alrighty.
All right, listen, guys, you were great.
Yeah, thanks for waiting so long, and also really appreciate the conversation this evening, yeah, yeah. And let's, we'll do it again.
And we'll do it again this spring?
Yeah, definitely. That sounds great.
And is there gonna be a spaghetti supper?
Uh, there will be, it is, is, uh, moved to the spring. My dear wife is, uh, cheering it, so.
I was wondering why no kids have been knocking on my door.
No, but it, it is, it is underway, and, uh, we're, we, we need to, you know, this is, this is exactly the type of thing we need to keep finding a way, because there's, there are things that are continuing to be canceled for these kids.
Yeah.
Every, every week, we're having to drop, drop things for them, and it's, it's painful to see, it's painful to watch, so, I think we have to continue to be creative and, and, uh, find ways to work the problem. Do it a different way. If it needs to be outside under a tent, maybe it has to be outside under a tent. Uh, but whatever it takes, just try to give these kids some, some experiences, they don't just keep losing things entirely.
It's also modeling resilience.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you for the time.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you very much. Good night.
All right, good night.
Um, so we've got, um, several things, but I noticed that, um, Dale and Martha are on the call, and that's probably because it's in the town administrator's report, or a job request. So, um, Luke, why don't we, if your game will postpone the conversation about the green cemetery, and, um, let's go to the town administrators' report.
Yep.
Um, Tim, I'll turn that over.
Barney getting all caught up in one.
Yeah, but do you want to jump right down to number two, libraries' requests? Martha and Dale are on the call. You have Martha's memo, and, uh.
Thank you, bye-bye, good night.
Supporting documentation for the request. Martha, do you kind of highlight what it is you, you're requesting?
Sure, yeah, so, our head of circ, circulation, Dina Scaparata, has just retired, and as we were going to post the position, yeah, like, the job description saw that it's, it's kind of a very generic description for a senior library assistant, and it just doesn't reflect what the job actually is, or, both what the job is as she was doing it, and what we think it should be, like, looking at other libraries. It's really a supervisory position. Well, for us, it's a, the leader of the department, but not with any supervisory authority, which is kind of an odd way of putting it. So we wanted to, you know, rewrite that job description, talk to the personnel board about, about updating the job description, and then reviewing the pay grade. And I'd say, you know, we have found some good applicants. I think, you know, I think we'll find someone to hire with it is, with it as it currently is. I think that if it were, you know, reviewed, we'd probably be able to find someone who would stay for longer, you know, more experience. So if not for this time, then for the next time we hire, I'd like to really have the, the position reflect what it is.
So, um, Martha, tell us, um, what are the key changes that you would like to make, and then are you also suggesting that this would be, um, at a higher, uh, grade? In terms of what we would pay?
Yeah, so the key changes, I think, are, first of all, just making clear what the role is, because it's this generic description that includes things that people in other departments really do. It's like, you know, job title share across, across departments, but it doesn't make it clear in the description. Um, adding more of the supervisory role, you know, giving more authority to set the procedures, enforce the policy, you know, really use professional expertise. And, yeah, I think it should be at a higher pay grade. You know, looking, like, Littleton and Concord both hired for the same position this year. For them, it was, for both of them, it was a full-time job paying six, over sixty thousand a year. For us, it's a, a four-day-a-week job paying thirty-five thousand a year. And, you know, they're bigger, I don't necessarily think we should be, you know, I think the four days a week actually works for us, but, it's not really competitive to, yeah, have that big of a difference.
But would it be then, um, at, um, four days a week for us at that?
Sort of equivalent to what they're paying in Lincoln, or? Yeah, this time you mentioned.
I think so. I mean, it would also be up to the personnel board to look at the pay grade and how it compares to other departments.
But if you sort of computed, you know, a full-time position in Lincoln, and whatever that hourly is, and then looked at ours, four days a week, at that same, what, what do you, what do you think the rough amount would be?
So, so that's sixty-five, uh, I'm not sure if I'm on the.
Yeah, so it'd be more like.
Yeah, so, so sixty-four would be a fifty-two thousand a year, if it was, uh, for years.
Right, yeah, yeah, for eighty percent of that.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, and so right now, the process is you, you're taking the, the current, uh, because you have somebody you'd like to fill the position.
Right.
Uh, you're, you're, that's going to the personnel board as is, with no change in the salary? And then you're saying for the, for the next time you fill it, you want to change the job description? Or if I got that wrong?
I think we'd like to change, you know, we'd like to change it as soon as possible, but we are, you know, we are working to fill it with the current job description and pay grade.
Okay.
You're not looking for more money? Yeah, can you fit it in your current budget?
It would depend what pay grade it was set at. But I think so.
I think Martha's suggesting you fill in the position and then go in the personnel board, and if it's regraded, then retroactively regrade that.
But you can't fill it unless you can assure them a salary.
Right, so not promising.
Well, what makes you, suggesting that they can fill it?
Yeah, well, they can fill it.
If the changes reflect a higher grade, you'd like to see that.
Well, I guess my question is, if, if you have candidates that you're gonna fill the old position with, will they be qualified to fill the new job description?
Right.
Or do you have to then get rid of them and start over again?
No, I think, I think with the new job description, we'd still, you know, be able to work with, you know, if we hire someone, we'll hire someone that we think could do the job with either job description.
Into that.
But you can, you can hire them. Money allowed now to attract them? I mean, I thought you said it's difficult, I thought I interpreted maybe what you said. It's difficult at the part-time job to get somebody that wants, that's qualified.
So we're in the interview process right now, and I think we will be able to find someone, but the, the people we're talking to are people who have less experience than I think would be ideal, but they, yeah, I think they're bright enough that, that we can find someone who can do it. But I also think that this is, yeah, speculative, but with it as it is, I think we're, we're likely to hire someone who does it for a couple of years, gets a master's degree, and moves on to another library for a full-time job. And so if we.
And then you, then that's what you mean, if you had it graded and described properly, that then when that happened, she would.
We'd be able to.
You'd post based on that new job description and get people that were already more skilled.
Right, or were able to, you know, promote the person into the.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, to retain the person by promoting them.
Yeah, and so what are you looking for from us tonight?
It's just, you're okay to, you know, move ahead with this and talk to the, the personnel board and FinCom.
And then after you do those conversations, it'll come back to us.
First, it goes to personnel board, then it comes back to us, and then we.
Right.
Um, send it to.
Yeah, so it comes back to us, and we'll know at that point what the cost would be.
Right.
And, okay.
And that would be for the next budget coming up, for twenty-three?
Yeah.
Is that for FY twenty-three, you're thinking, Martha, or would that would be, that's for FY twenty-three? So the person would continue, that you hire now would continue at the current salary through the end of this fiscal year? And then if it were approved, for the next fiscal year, that person would get a, a raise?
That's what I was thinking, or, or if at the point it was approved, we looked at our budget and thought that we could absorb it into this year's budget, then, seeing if we could do it then.
Okay.
But I'm not asking for more money for this fiscal year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
For the one we're in.
Right.
Right.
So, I'm looking at, it was a little hard because the, the, the pay and the staff.
Yeah, I had a hard time with that, too.
But, um, but I just wrote it down here, I think so. So, what I'm seeing is, we're paying, if I got it right, thirty-five to forty around for a part-time position, staff of nine, and the, the comparable towns that have small libraries, like Oxford, Dover, Harvard, and Manchester, they have single-digit staffs, and that position is in the fifty, fifty to sixty range, right? Is that kind of your thinking, Martha, as well?
Yeah, that's what I was seeing.
So it's about ten to fifteen K, probably, probably fifteen K, to kind of frame it in our minds, right?
Yeah, yeah, like from thirty-five to, you know, Dale was saying, maybe you're at fifty-two. Yeah.
Okay, because the big systems pay more, but they, it's a bigger system.
Right, different, different scale.
Okay.
But then eighty percent of them, eighty percent of them.
Right, because it's a four-day-a-week.
Oh, if it stays at four days, I thought you were thinking of a full-time.
I think, we're thinking staying at four days for now, you know, potentially as there's turnover in the future, reaching the shifting hours around.
So, no, the, the other thing is, have we ever promoted in town? Right, I, you know, my only concern is that, no, I just, honestly, have we? I, you know, I just, I can't think of any position where we've promoted. But you don't necessarily wanna groom somebody if it's all of a sudden gotta go out again. You know, I mean, I'm all for promotions, right? If somebody considers that they, they deserve a promotion, I'm just wondering.
Yeah. It did actually happen at the library for, for me a few years ago.
That's right, that's right.
Not, not actually when I became the director, that, you know, that one was posted, but there was, you know, someone retired and the job descriptions were shuffled around, because we had previously had an assistant director who was also the children's librarian, and we switched that, have, have that as two separate positions, and then it was, you know, posted internally for me to apply for, and.
Yeah, no, I know, I mean, like I said, I'm all for promotions, I just, I, I don't wanna have somebody come in and then all of a sudden have to have it get posted, you know what I mean? Yeah, if, if, you know, if you're truly gonna groom somebody to be promoted, and, you know, you think they're competent and qualified, then, you know, I, I'm, I'm supportive of that. I just didn't know the process if we actually have to. What if you can do it internally?
Yeah, we're able to do, to do an internal posting, so.
All right, so are we all comfortable then, having them take this to the personnel board? Yeah, all right, good.
Sounds good to me, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, bye.
Okay, um.
Okay, moving on.
Yeah.
There's a letter in the packet from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, they, like, a Carlisle representative to the planning council. It's vacant for some time, uh, planning board, uh, recommending Peter Yell for the magic, uh, representative, but this is for the, the overall council.
Yeah, yeah. I'm also on magic. Who was the, the, uh?
That's what I was gonna ask. Who used to do it for us?
I don't recall. They said it had been vacant for a bit, three years.
What do these guys do?
We select an elected or appointed official or resident.
What are they doing at such meetings?
Uh, well, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council does a lot. Um, they're actually gonna be writing our HPC, our housing protection plan. They just con, um, completed our MVP.
Right.
Um, they, yeah, they're very, um, they're very active, um.
Yeah, we pay the assessment.
I, I'm happy to do it. I, I do magic, which is the subgroup of M A P C.
Peter said, did, Peter said he would do it?
No, he's on the other one, on magic.
He's on magic, we, um.
So you, they're recommending Peter, Peter's not recommending Peter, is that what you're saying?
No, well, he, he's on the other, there's a subgroup, a sub-regional group, which is magic.
Yeah.
And M A P C is kind of the umbrella planning organization that has one representative from, I think it does a hundred and one cities and towns that are part of.
Did I misunderstand?
Pete is doing magic.
So you, you're.
But we looking for somebody.
They're already recommending him, that's something.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
He's kind of tricking you.
Well, so Kate, Kate, if you're up for doing it, I'm fine with that. Any, anybody else vying for this?
Yeah, no, I, I'm fine with it too, just, you know, should we ask Nathan? I mean, I don't wanna necessarily exclude him just because he's not here, but. No, I'm, well, no, I'm just saying, you know, I mean. Anyway, it, it's been vacant for how many years? It can wait another year.
Right, yeah.
I'm just, you know, just to give him the opportunity.
Peter Yell, or that's, uh, the.
No, that, we, that's. So why don't we, um, I'll, you wanna sound out Nathan, Luke, when he gets back?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, um, and we can just, and we can do this, um, vote as they, they're describing it. We'll do that at our next meeting. All right, okay.
I'm assuming he'll say no, I just, you know.
Yeah.
Because he's not here.
Yep. Good idea.
Yeah, that'll exclude it, you know.
And then, uh, let's see, what else did you have on your report here, um, yeah, Priscilla?
Yeah, I'm recommending that the town hire a Currie Street resident, Priscilla Dumpka, as a part-time employee for the end of December to, uh, finish up the work on the cares program that she and Bill Rizzo.
Has she agreed to that?
She, she's very, yeah, willing to consider it. I can't call her for a month, so that's the, that's the agreement we have. I have to leave her alone.
Did you have a nice week of vacation for, yeah? When you got to the fleet, that's like, yeah.
Uh, you don't need any.
No, she doesn't.
You know.
He's letting us know.
Just letting, you know, yeah, she's, she's willing, but, you know, she wants to take a break, and that's, that's.
And you have, um, and you have money in your budget to do that?
We do.
Okay.
We do. All right, then, moving on.
Five thousand dollars in all. With everything, I told you, she just saved us, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars, she, she did a piece of that.
Yeah.
And October is, uh, Concord Carlisle Community Chess Month, and they've asked again for the, the usual resolutions the board votes, which I think is a test.
Yeah, let's see, who would like to make that motion?
Oh, it's attached, I have to scroll down, hang on.
It looks a lot like last year's, but.
Here it is.
I'm still going to.
The proclamation.
Yeah, right, right.
I, I move that, uh.
Just say as written, right?
Yes, that we, uh, declare, um, which day was it?
It's, uh.
It's the whole month, I think, isn't it?
The month of.
It begins October first, twenty-twenty-one.
The month of October to be Concord Carlisle Community Chess Month, um, with the proclamation as presented in the packet.
All right, any conversation, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously, alrighty, and.
Then we have the draft agenda for the twelfth, which will be.
Look at that very quickly here.
We'll be slotting a dog hearing in there in the.
Oh, yeah.
He's slot there.
Sorry about that.
We'll be meeting tomorrow afternoon to, uh.
Yeah. Did we pick a time, because I cannot.
Yeah, it's two o'clock.
I can't pick two. I gave you my window.
You said three to five.
Three to five.
Oh, you did, I didn't see that, sure, I can do three.
Three?
Whatever.
Yeah, let's do three. But, um, let's look at that and see if Kate or Luke, you have anything you want to.
M A P C, what's a TBD?
Be determined.
I know what that means.
Dangerous dog hearing.
Hey, I think that's when the dangerous dog hearing happens.
That's the continuation of hearing.
Yeah, it's a continuation of this one.
Yeah.
Well, the other one's later.
Yeah, another one's later.
The following meeting, yeah, the end of October, we'll be all prepared.
We'll all, yeah, we'll be. Yeah, for the next one, our, you know, I mean, unless there's new information, I think we should just.
Just deliberate and make a decision, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, for, uh, the continuation of this one.
Continuation of the hearing.
We're not getting any more.
No more new testimony, right.
And it shouldn't be, I don't think it'll be a long deliberation.
But it's, how long do we need for the, uh, cable TV? We need at least an hour.
Oh, that's right, we had to put cable TV back in.
Cemeteries. Yeah, cemetery should be quick.
Yeah, well, it's just.
Yeah, um, well, then we have this EverSource.
This is EverSource, EverSource's grant of location service. You know what, very often they don't come up, don't come, and we don't do anything, so.
We've got the discussion with municipal facilities for half an hour, and we have the police and fire goals. I think we should, right, I think we should, um.
You know what, let's drop the, the municipal facilities.
I was gonna say, drop the goal.
Drop the goals, okay, either one.
I'm guessing both police and fire would be happy to have another couple of weeks. Which reminds me, though, uh, let's see, Luke, that's you with fire.
Yeah, supposedly communication too.
That's you with communication.
I believe I'm the communication, yeah.
So do you know whether, uh, the police, the fire chief has the goals written down?
He does, yeah, 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 so I mean, you know, you had them at the beginning of the year, um, yeah, it's just a matter of, we should probably do goals, yeah.
And the police have theirs too, because he was already ready two weeks ago.
You don't need an hour, you don't need an hour for all of them, no.
No.
So we're saying we're gonna wait on municipal facilities?
Well, the only reason I was suggesting to wait for them was because they, um, on the fourth, which, what's the date of this meeting?
Twelve.
The twelfth, okay, yeah, well, the, on the fourth, they're gonna have that first meeting about the, um.
Okay.
The new commit, you know, the new department, so it might give them a little extra time to do a little more work on that to have something to say, but that's.
So let's move, move the municipal facilities to the twenty-sixth, I guess is the next meeting. And then we'll do police and fire at this next meeting. Excuse me.
Oh, you know, I'm not even here. We're not even here on the twelfth, and they're already. I know, you're right.
Um.
Typical.
Okay, and so Luke, it would be, Luke, it'd be good to have those goals in advance, obviously, we put them in the packet. And then the chief, you're gonna work with the police chief and get his goals?
He's already done.
Okay, but so we get him in though, and Derek, get him in the packet.
Ah, okay, yes.
Needs to go out the week before.
Yeah, all right, I guess I'll call him up and tell him that he's gotta reprieve.
Um, great, and then, uh, was there anything else we said we needed to add here?
Nothing here in the cable.
Okay, the TV is the.
Busk, um.
And, and bask.
So maybe if we do fifteen minutes each for fire and fifteen for police, make that a half an hour?
Who, I don't even know who the person to talk to with communication, another.
Well, it's really, it's generally managed by the two chaps.
By the two chiefs, yeah, but I don't know if they have like a head.
Kirk Bishop's the, the other supervisor.
You can get that to half an hour, then, you pick up a half an hour.
And then we, um, uh, and so then we can give Sue the half an hour that the, um.
Can she do it in a half an hour?
That's what she had tonight.
I know, but.
Do we have to have an executive session?
Yeah, and then we do, we should still do the executive session, so that would, so, um, we put her in for the half an hour that, uh.
And you got a fifteen-minute slot.
Yeah, we'll put that in there, and then, um, if there, if there's something, anything else new, that's what we'd like to hear from Kate and Luke, because we can finish with this tomorrow afternoon when we sit down together.
Yeah, so Dave's not gonna be, just not, I might be a tad late, so I'd rather not do an early executive session.
Oh, gotcha.
But I guess that'll probably be the cable anyway, right?
Yeah, that could be, could be later, because she's less.
Yeah, and we just wanna make sure Nathan is gonna be able to be there.
I mean, I will be here, it's just, yeah.
A little late maybe, okay. Oh, well, maybe we'll, we better wait for you though for the dog hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they already don't like you.
Okay, um, uh.
Well, definitely be here, but, well, what is it, would you do seven fifteen? Yeah, I should definitely be here. Well, now it's getting dark.
Yeah, we could.
Yeah, it can probably be seven. Nobody gotta come from Texas. Two Concord teams are playing at Banda Davis, the Carlisle teams are playing at Texas.
Yeah, okey-dokey, um, and should we just put off the cemetery fees, you know, the following meeting, or try to fit that in here?
Yeah, no, honestly, grand scheme of things, just think about a number, I mean, I think this is a quick, easy discussion.
If you look at the data he's presented, it's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's put that, then, on this, we'll fit that into this agenda as well. Okay.
All right.
Great, um, and we don't have any minutes to approve, I don't believe, right? And the warrants are more just for information purposes, right? I'm sure you've looked at those quite carefully.
We studied them.
Okay, and, uh, just quickly on the liaison reports, I just, uh, wanted to say that on the subject of the pickleball facility, um, that the select board has, uh, is waiting on the, um, determination that the recreation commission makes, and only if they approve it, uh, then it'll come to the select board for us to, hear it and deliberate on it. So we are waiting, yes, we are waiting for that, um, action by the recreation commission, and if it does come to us, we will discuss it in open session. Alrighty, any other liaison reports? Okey-dokey, uh, then I think we can adjourn this meeting.
Well, just one, um, tomorrow night is the master plan outreach.
Community forum.
Community forum.
Absolutely, we're hoping people will attend, you can come in person, or it's, uh, also available via Zoom.
Recommend, which do you recommend?
I think in person, we'll probably do more. Yes, in the cafeteria at the school, and, um, the presentation, there'll be a presentation, and then break up into discussion groups, and they're gonna happen both online and in person. So, yeah, it would be great, anybody still listening, we would love to see you at the community forum tomorrow night. Thank you all, and may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, she's got it on ten fifteen, look at you, Barbara.